You're joining us live from City Hall here in the great city of South Fulton. Introducing Mayor and Council. Mayor Khalid. Councilwoman Dr. Katherine Rau, District One. Councilwoman Carmelita Gomes, District Two. Councilwoman Helen Zenobia Willis, District Three. Councilman J.C. Sebastian, District Four. Councilwoman Kiyosha B. Bell, District Five. Councilwoman Natasha Williams Brown, District Six. Mayor Pro Tim Linda Becker Pritchett, District Seven. Interim City Attorney Sarah Kelly. City Clerk Corey Adams. City Manager Sharon D. Subedon. Thank you for joining the City of South Fulton Council Meeting, a city on the rise.
All right, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the 4:00 PM work session. This is the first of several meetings we have here at our newly minted, it's still new to us, council chambers here at 5440 Fulton Industrial Boulevard, 30336. Giving, giving honors, I've been taught by my elders, giving honor to God, who is ahead of my life, our ancestors, our elders that are present, and our incredible staff. So, to our ancestors, senior man for I say, welcome, you are welcome here. We have one of our elders with us. He is one of the fathers of the City of South Fulton, Representative Roger Bruce. Would you like to say a few words? If it's red, you're hot.
All right, there we go. Very brief, you know, I, I just wanted to come by, I had to come by for another reason, but since I was here, I wanted to take the opportunity to tell you how proud I am of all of you for the work that you guys are doing. As I ride through the streets and I see people out there working to improve our streets, I see buildings going up, I see all kinds of new businesses coming to our city. I know you guys get a lot of grief, I know. When I was a state representative, people called me complaining that a dog was barking. So, I get it. But sometimes people just have to tell you thank you for the work that you're doing. And since I was in the building, I wanted to be the one to do it. So, thank you very much for all that you guys do. And I'm looking forward to what this city is going to become, because I know it's going to be greater than it is now. It's a remarkable opportunity that we have to set the, the standards and the goals for our children and our grandchildren. And I just wanted to say I was proud of all of you and thank you very much for letting me be a part of it.
Thank you, Representative Bruce. Ladies and gentlemen, Representative Roger Bruce. All right, now to honoring our staff. I understand that it is the sixth anniversary of our Deputy Clerk. Congratulations, Ms. Call, there's more coming in the announcements, I'm sure. And just hot off the presses, I want to say, you know, our Code Enforcement Department has been winning awards since 2023, State Code Enforcement of the Year, National Code Enforcement of the Year. They were just honored by the International Code Council as the 2025 Community Service Award. So, once again, our Code Enforcement Board are being recognized nationally and internationally as one of the best, if not the best in the nation. So, congratulations, Code Enforcement. And with that, Mr. Clerk, please call the role. Everyone make sure that you are in civic clerk in our 4:00 PM meeting for those up on the desk.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, members of council and general public in large, the roll call. The Honorable Katherine F. Rau, District One.
Present.
The Honorable Carmelita Gomes, District Two.
Here.
The Honorable Helen Z. Willis, District Three.
Here.
The Honorable J.C. Sebastian, District Four.
Present.
The Honorable Kiyosha B. Bell, District Five.
Present.
The Honorable Natasha Williams Brown, District Six.
Present.
And the Honorable Linda B. Pritchett, District Seven.
Here.
And the Honorable America Lee. Present. Sir Mayor, you have a call.
All right, thank you. First item is our City Managers' Report, Madam Subedon.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Representative Bruce, thank you for the kind words and our staff and public. I have submitted the City Managers' Report to include the Finance Report through the month of April, with the exception of finances through the month of March. And I am subject to your questions. There was one thing that I noticed that I want to bring to your attention. For the first time in probably a very long time, we saw a little bit of downtick in our sales tax numbers. So, both our last and our T-S blast, there was a little bit of a downtick. And so, you know, I'm watching the economy carefully. I am concerned about a recession. As we get ready to prepare our budget, we will be talking to you all about your priorities. But I'm also cautioning department heads to be conservative as we go into the next budget year. There may be some gaps at the federal level that we are called upon to fill. And so, I am, I'm watching it very carefully. Hopefully, it was just a blip, but I wanted to bring that to your attention because it's the first time that I can remember in a very long time that we've seen measurable downtick in our sales tax numbers. But with that, I am subject to your questions.
The Chair recognizes Councilman Sebastian.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Ms. Subedon, for your report. I just have a couple of short questions. Yeah, I did notice downtick, I was gonna ask about that, so thank you for pointing that out. It was mentioned on page forty-eight of the report that we're looking to install some additional EV charging stations. Can you give us an idea of how they would be spread out across the city? Because I know that's a question I get from some constituents with electric vehicles.
So, we will be putting them at every park. I actually think we're going to see groundbreaking at Welcome Mall, maybe as soon as next week, depending on weather. We are gonna see an expansion here at City Hall. But every one of our parks facilities will have, will be participating in what's called the Georgia Get Ready Program. We are gonna be offering this to the community, no charge to them, for them to charge their electric vehicles at our parks when they're visiting our parks. We will be posting some rules around that, you know, you can't park your car there overnight. But we want to make this available to our community at no additional cost to the community so that they can charge their electric vehicles when they're visiting our facilities. So, every park will get them. I can give you a specific on how many chargers per location in a separate report.
Thank you. And in relation to that, all the parks are not yet equipped with cameras, correct? So, will we be making sure that piece happens before we put these charging stations in?
Yes, we'll make sure those things are happening in collaboration.
Awesome, thank you. And finally, still with cameras, I know at one point, they, it was mentioned that there was a bit of a hole in District Four when it comes to Flock cameras, because typically so rural, but there was plans to put some more. I don't know if that has been addressed yet or if it's coming and when.
All right, let's circle back with Police Department there to point on Flock, with Flock. I haven't seen any new installations this year, so I'll make sure to do that and get back to you. And I also did get a note from my very responsive General Services Director, and he said there will be six chargers per location.
Okay. And in relation to that, I remember asking about one Flock camera by another jurisdiction that was in the city. I don't think we got a resolution from it, because you know how I feel, I don't think another jurisdiction should have a Flock camera that they control in our city. So, I don't know if, you know, that is still on the to-do list or we've hit a roadblock with it. Because I can go to the city and ask them for it if you want me to.
That's okay, we'll handle it.
Okay.
And I do think I have an answer on Flock for you. Two more cameras are scheduled, sorry, twenty more cameras are scheduled. And the rollout for Flock has started. Normally, they send us a weekly report once their rollout has started. So, we have twenty more Flock cameras that are coming.
Okay, thank you.
All right, next in the queue is Councilwoman Gomes.
Thank you, this was a very detailed report. I did have a few questions, though. Were you aware that the tiny libraries have been removed out of some of the parks? And wanted to know if they are planning to replace any of those tiny libraries?
So, I did have a conversation with the Parks Director. I think it used to be run by libraries, and I need to circle back. I don't think they found that they were all that effective. So, we'll circle back and provide an answer and an update to you on that.
Okay, just wanted to let you know that was initiative that the council started to put tiny libraries to help increase reading and access to books, so. And we designed it to where it was kind of like a piece of art to help with the cultural and arts aspect, so hopefully, we can figure that part out. Also, too, again, I saw that you all will be applying for the Safe Streets and Roads Grant, so I'm excited about that. Also, too, excuse me, also, with speaking of the Vision Zero Plan, do we have any updates on the En and Rose Speed Study as of yet? That might be for you or Sarah, excuse me, Attorney Kelly.
I know that they have done the initial counts. I think we're just waiting on the report. As you know, they can't do the counts when school is out or else it wouldn't be an accurate count. I do know that the counts have been finished, but the report should be forthcoming.
Did they say how long it'll take? Because you know, we've been going through this for a while.
They didn't say, but you know me, I don't mind putting some positive pressure and getting an answer for you.
I appreciate that. And lastly, I know that you, City Manager, mentioned about being cautious in reference to some of the downtick that's happening. Specifically, are we looking at trying to, are you informing staff about doing it, maybe a hiring freeze or just, I know, being truly conservative, but just wanted to know if that is on the horizon?
No, I think we're in very good financial shape. We don't have a need to do a hiring freeze. I see what's happening in the counties and cities around us. We're not them, they're not like us. But I do think that we should be thinking about employing some belt tightening and diverting funding in other areas. But at this point, we have such an increased demand for services, I don't see a need to do a hiring freeze. But I am gonna be looking really hard at any request for additional positions in the budget. There are only probably really small number of places where I will consider it.
That concludes my questions, thank you.
All right, next, Councilwoman Willis.
Thank you. I see there's an update in here for the May thirty-first. Are we still on schedule for the repair of the elevator at Welcome Mall Park for May thirty-first?
So far, so good. As I shared in the report, we have to do a complete replacement. But we are working with the state to get a temporary approval to make repairs and use it as is. But the new standards require that we have committed to the replacements. They'll only give us that temporary operations license if we've committed to do a full replacement to bring it up to today's standards. And it is gonna be a significant cost. We have put a, in fact, on this agenda, I believe, there's a contract with, with Shinder Elevator, for all of our elevators, for ongoing maintenance and if we have any future upgrades that are required.
With a temporary commitment, with a temporary, with allowing us to repair it temporary, with the commitment that we will modernize our elevator, do you know how long they will give us?
I don't think it's limited, as long as we are in the process. I will tell you, the elevator is obsolete, so it's taking a little long to get parts, but they've given us the estimate of the thirty-first. And I think they'll be reasonable with us as, as long as they know we have a purchase order to, to replace it.
Okay, thank you. The other thing, I have a question about in the locker rooms. Some residents brought this to my attention, and I, I, this is the first time I really paid attention to it. The installation of the locker rooms left some, I would ask you just to go look at, suspect, inspect it, because it's, it's not right. And one of the lockers that were replaced, it's not large enough. Like, if someone had a fifteen-size shoe, they definitely could not store their lockers. They could not, could store their shoes in that locker. I said somebody, I did not call any names. I mean, I, I, I just would encourage you to go to Welcome Mall Park and ask staff to show you what resident showed me. It's not right. And then lastly, where are we with repairing the tennis courts at the South Fulton Tennis Center? The clay courts, because I was there three weeks ago, and it doesn't look like any activity was happening.
I'll find out, I'll find out before the end of this meeting and give you an update. We are gonna be actually meeting onsite at Welcome Mall because we're not gonna be able to just do the floor. There's a lot of other stuff we're gonna have to do in conjunction. So, we'll put together sort of a scope of work for, for Welcome Mall. But while I'm there, I'll make sure to look at the locker rooms.
Okay. Do you know when you're gonna be onsite?
Ask Maria to schedule it, so it's probably in the next, next week or two.
Okay. Do you mind sending me an invite so that I can point out some things as well to you? Okay, thank you. Okay, also, if I could get a timeline for those courts, that would be great. Because I was told that those courts were in progress of being converted to regular courts, the, the clay courts, and it doesn't look like anything is happening. And that was three weeks ago, it may be something, I haven't been over there in three weeks, but I don't see where anything is happening. And you just explained about the floors, but if we could get some type of timeline after that assessment, and if we could just start, I know we won't be able to, I know, well, the summer is approaching, that's another thing, so. Lastly, the temperature regulation in that pool, can we please, I mean, after a seven-million-dollar renovation, I, I'm just kind of disappointed that we are still having problems with regulating the temperature in that pool. And I know the summer is approaching us, and I don't want anyone to have a heat stroke. And we're not the only center, because I've asked City of Atlanta, who has about four auditoriums, and they have converted some of their roofs from open roofs to enclosed roofs like us. And they have gone through the same, as a matter of fact, they said that we are in a better position than they are, because they're dealing with old pool packs. And so, but they go through the same thing, regulating the temperature. But I want to make sure we have that regulated, because when the summer approaches, it's only gonna get hotter. And I think that is it. Staff has already sent a request for the groundbreaking for the dual roundabouts. The community is really, ready for that, and I think that's it, thank you.
All right, we're just waiting for dates. And the manufacturer actually had people onsite that day when we were over there working on the pool pack, so that is warranty work that's being done.
The Chair recognizes Councilwoman Pritchett.
Thank you. Ms. Subedon, for the Police Department, do you have an update on Shot Spotter? I know that my area, the Oakley Township area, was supposed to be added to that, and I don't know if you have an update for that?
I'll check with Chief, I'll check with Chief and get back to you.
That's it.
All right, thank you, Madam Subedon. I have questions we will discuss later. The Chair, please sound the next item.
Next, next item is presentations. First presentation this evening is a discussion. Alcohol in Parks will be presented by Tony Art Turner, Director, Department of Parks and Recreation, and Chief Keith Meadows, Police Department.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. So, listen, we, we do have a, a presentation, but I, I really just want to have a, I want to have a discussion, right? I want to have a discussion. As the Director of Parks and Recreation, it's my responsibility to govern what we do inside the facility, right? That includes the, the kids, the programming, the environment, whatever that looks like, that's my responsibility. And I take that responsibility serious, because I've been, I've been in Parks and Recreation since I was six years old. It afforded me the opportunity to go to school for free on a full scholarship, right? Chief Meadows and my dad worked together in, in Atlanta, he was a part of PAL. And that was, that was a safe space, so I want us to understand, Mr. Clerk, can you go to the first slide? The second slide, I'll probably, yeah. It's, it's a safe space. And we as a unit, my team and I, over the last two years, we've been responsible for creating an environment that's safe. It was always safe. Prior to me getting here, I don't, I don't know if that was the case. My team and I, and when I say my team and I, I mean us holistically as a city. We made these spaces safe again, right? For kids to come, for senior events, for things of that nature. And for the last thirty years, that's what I've been a part of, just this safe nurturing environment. So, I want to, I want us to keep that in mind, it's a safe space for kids to go to. And many of you have been a part of Parks and Rec Program for years. Out-the-school program, summer camp program, many, many of you have been involved, so you understand what I'm saying, what I'm saying. A nurturing, safe space for kids, programming, and things of that nature. You can go to the next slide, Mr. Clerk. That being said, you know, when I think about alcohol usage in the park, it scares me. Because again, we're being impactful for kids, kids are watching us, we're trying to be responsible role models. Even if, in our Youth Athletic Association, we always preached to them about alcohol and drugs in the park. We're always getting on them, anytime we smell marijuana, anytime we smell different things, we're always getting on them because kids are around. So, again, it's important to me as the Director of Parks and Recreation to make sure it's a safe nurturing environment. And again, we worked hard to create this environment. It was not there two years ago. And as the, as the responsible party, and as a parent, as a mentor, I want to make sure that Tony and I, my department, we continue to create that environment. Next slide. Integrity, keeping the integrity of the Parks and Recreation Program, right? Again, I keep saying safe space, safe space for kids to go, mentorship programs. We have an award-winning program that is coming out of these rec centers, right? Again, we have to, we're, we're, we're a state nationally known at this point. So, just keeping the integrity of our, our recreation facilities, the program. And by having alcohol, I just, I just have to oppose that. I don't want any alcohol in my parks around my kids, because again, I have a son, I'm always preaching, don't drink, don't smoke, and things of that nature. So, again, it's my responsibility to make sure that we keep a safe nurturing space for our youth in the recreation centers. Next slide. Liabilities. So, you know, talking to a risk management about liabilities, it's all sorts of liabilities, right? The number one liability to me, again, is the kids. The kids saying that, oh, you know, they were drinking in the recreation center. Again, these kids are out-the-school programs, summer camp programs. Keeping that nurturing environment, the liability that's involved, when, when somebody comes into the facilities and drinks, goes home drinking and driving, all those liabilities falls on me as well as this council and this body in the city as well. So, I just, I really want us to keep that in mind when we're making this decision. This is a, this is a, it's an easy decision for me as the Director of Parks and Recreation, and my responsibility to the citizens, to the youth, to the kids that we serve, so it's easy for me. Next slide, Mr. Clerk. With that being said, we currently have legislation that prohibits alcohol and drugs in the park. So, we're, now we're gonna, we set the stage to do that, which was a great. And now, we're gonna amend it to have served alcohol in certain parks. So, I want us to think about that moving forward. We set this legislation a number of years ago to protect the integrity of our programs, our kids in our parks, right? With that being said, I'm gonna pass it to Chief Meadows and let him elaborate.
You know, I can't, I can't tell you how many hours of the You know, I can't I can't tell you how many hours of discussion we've had surrounding this issue at the City Managers Meeting. Um certainly, we wanna be as thoughtful as we possibly can when it comes to to this particular issue. One of the reasons that we started the um Park Rangers Program is because we wanted to make sure that we had the appropriate outreach. Uh to our young people. And certainly to Director Turner's point. Um it's kind of counterintuitive when we talk to them about drugs and alcohol. And and then we see our park rangers engaging with people that might be partaking in in inside of our city parks. And so it's gonna be really important that we send the right message here. And I think that it's important for us to be as thoughtful as we possibly can surrounding this issue. Because certainly, um I understand uh where the body is going with this. But certainly, we wanna make sure that we're considering all avenues as it relates to uh public safety and the health and well-being in our our city parks.
Madam City Manager, do you have anything to add?
Um not at this time. It, we have discussed it. We understand there's an interest in this for certain city events. Uh but I wanna turn it over to Attorney Kelly, uh because I think she has some things to add. And we did have some solution ideas um that we wanna put on the table and also get your feedback.
Thank you. I I would like for this to be solution-focused, so Attorney Kelly, uh if you wanna bring us your recommendations.
Sure. So after, you know, hearing from staff and as Chief mentioned, we have spent hours, and that's not an exaggeration, hours discussing this. Um I believe on the agenda is the second read for the ordinance for um alcohol in parks. Um there's also having talked with staff, having talked with the PD's office, Parks and Recs. You also have in front of you what will be submitted as a a walk-on, and that's kind of our solution that if we do this. Um this is the best way to do something that gives us all heartburn, to be very honest. I know part of the discussion is that other municipalities have alcohol in parks, including City of Atlanta. Um I think it's very important to mark the delineations that we are not Atlanta. Um Atlanta is self-insured. They have an entire department dedicated just to this. It's actually in the mayor's office. Um they have multiple personnel just dedicated to alcohol in parks. Additionally, on their website, they also um outsourced to a completely different vendor. The processing of alcohol permits. So the city itself is not directly involved in the process. It's a completely different vendor that handles Piedmont Park, Chastain, things of that nature. So that does kind of create a bit of a buffer between the city's action and then the action of the consumer. Um they also have an application form um that I've looked at. I've also looked at DeKalb County's application form as well, and I've gone over that with the Police Department, just to kind of see what would work for us as opposed to what's working for them. Um but also, after contemplated all of these things, there's a there's a few concerns that I wanna raise for you all's consideration. Um one, making sure that, you know, no children will be at these events, and you'll see that in the um resolution that's before you. That the host of the event, and it is only limited to city council and mayoral events. Um so this is not a free-for-all, anybody can bring a flask or one of those bracelet flasks to the park. That's not what this is. Um by limiting it in scope to a mayoral and or city council event, that does give us a little bit more control about what's happening and who's consuming the alcohol. It would also be limited to a select group of three vendors um that have the requisite certification. Um to make sure that they can recognize when someone's inebriated and things of that nature, when to cut someone off, how to deal with someone who may need. Um intervention and things of that nature. But that is also going to include our staff having requisite training specifically, including the. Police Department on how to deal with someone who's inebriated at an event and how to make sure that we're not incurring additional liability on top of that. Um additionally, of course, we have public perce- perception which may be negative around the consumption of alcohol. Increased police presence will be required at these types of events, because there's going to be a matrix that will determine if it's a city. Um council or mayoral event, if you tick that we need alcohol box, it's automatically going to change the matrix. As far as the number of personnel that's going to be needed at that event. Um also, I do wanna give a bit of a, an example that I've. In speaking with some of my colleagues who have experienced alcohol in parks, there was a situation out of Broward County. Where someone was drinking before they came to a city event. They had one drink. They left the event, got into a wreck. There were two fatalities, and that was a thirty million dollar settlement. Um the mock trial for that incident was seventy million. Given that we are not self-insured, that we are insured through Girma, and they are looking at our premiums and things of that nature. It would be against my advice to move forward with this, but if we are going to move forward, what you have in front of you would be the best way.
The Chair recognizes Councilwoman Gomes.
Thank you for recognizing me. Uh what prompted this? Have you been receiving, I guess, requests? For us to start doing events in the park with alcohol? Because I thought this was actually tabled for quite some time.
It had been tabled for quite some time, and there was a request to bring it back for a second read. Um but I did want to, as far as amendment to the ordinance. But I did, in addition to the second read to the ordinance, wanted to, based on the staff recommendation and the input. Give you all an opportunity for another option to consider as well, which is the resolution you have in front of you.
So we're gonna be looking at two. So which one is on the agenda? This is a walk-on item. You're telling us is the best recommendation versus the one that's um in the system? That's currently what we're looking at. Okay. All right. Um and just, I guess, after careful um thought and consideration around it, I do um. I do support what uh Director Turner has said. So um if we are going to move forward with the proposed legislation that is currently on the agenda, not the walk-on item. I would like to remove my name off of that. That concludes my comments.
The Chair recognizes Councilwoman Sebastian.
Thank you, ma'am. Um I think when this item came up before. I expressed my discomfort with. The tax-paying citizens who rent our parks. Not being able to also benefit if we pass this. Now, let me say this out of the gate. I am not a drinker. And I don't condemn people who choose um to have alcohol. But I'm very uncomfortable with this whole aspect of alcohol in the parks. And to me, if this goes forward, I don't even think this walk-on item is even strong enough personally. Um to me, ha- there has to be limits. They need to be stronger. Um and I think you mentioned this, Attorney Kelly. Um stronger um police oversight, and Lord knows we are kind of stretched there already. Um and certainly, regardless of the facility that um is being used. By us or the public, there can be no kids at all on the premises. Uh I don't wanna hear they're in a different room over here and something, no. You're gonna rent the whole facility. It's gonna be closed, except for, that's the kind of thing that I would wanna see if this would move forward. But I am um inclined to agree with staff that I'm not comfortable at all with this. And I I did have one group that I partner with um that did asks about. If the city would allow wine to be served at one of the events in one of the parks in District Four. And my response was, we don't, we don't have something to cover that right now. So until we, or if we pass something, it's off the table. But I am very, very uncomfortable with um alcohol. Because we have a whole lot of problems with how people are driving on these these streets here. We already have it. And I just cannot see us as a city contributing to people. Drinking and then getting into a vehicle. And I'm talking about to someone who was who was hit by a drunk driver last, just last year. And that basically threw my world into topsy-turvy, as we'll say. Ms. Subidan, you know that term. Um so I'm really, I I'm, I am, I am strongly against this. And if there are enough votes here to pass it, I would still like to see some of these things strengthened. If those that maybe are in favor of this have the votes to pass it. Thank you.
Councilwoman Bell.
Thank you so much, Chief and um Director Turner, um for your presentation. Um I really had some concerns as it relates to this. Um many of you know or have participated in one of our council events. Um which was last year's My Rhythms Bell Event, um which is a jazz event specifically for adults. Twenty-one age and older. Um I do appreciate the resolution that was brought back by Attorney Kelly. After we've spoken numerous of times about this. However, um some things that I would like to see is a request for a waiver. Um so I would definitely like to, if we are going to move forward with this, is to have a waiver, and that, those are actual parameters. In which I added to ensure that we have a safe environment for adults that are twenty-one and older. In addition, as my colleague mentioned, um specifying the amount of alcohol. Um whether that's being wine and there's one glass, because the standard size of wine, which is a fermented group. And uh grape and fruits is normally five, I believe, five ounces. So if we are specifically giving um clear and concise information. As far as making or allowing restrictions on the type of containers. Um and of course, age requirement, I believe, you know, I'm in support of it. Because this is once a year, a lot of um residents had requests last year in regards to having a simple glass of wine. Um you know, I do believe in keeping a safe and nurturing environment for our kids. Um at all of our parks and recreation facilities. However, the event that is in question is my event. That's an event that um I specifically requested. To be able to serve wine at for residents. Um in addition to that, you know, asking, requiring proof of ID. Um to make sure that those individuals are twenty-one uh twenty-one years of age and older. As well as um also requesting for each individual to sign a waiver if they will be consuming alcohol. And in addition to that, um having a more organized way of of making sure that each person has one glass. Um I I do have, you know, little plastic glasses, you know, and they're less than five ounce. So if we're looking at safe environment and making sure that we have a safe event, these are just some things that I would like to suggest to see. Added in this resolution is a waiver, you know, some type of ticket or limits as far as the amount of glasses and or container size. And then again, making sure, as it's already mentioned, about the ages, the age requirements. So thank you. That's my feedback.
Councilwoman Willis.
Thank you. Um I wanna thank um Director Turner and all of our public safety. For keeping our parks safe and lawless, free. Um I would say that when I first got elected, that was one of the things that I was charged with. Is to get the lawlessness out of Welcome Mall Park, and that was eight years ago. And we've come a mighty long way. Um I did attend Councilmember Bell's event, and I can confirm that it was no children there. It was an all-adult environment. But I do have concerns arou- about bringing alcohol. Around kids, because we do want our Parks and Recreation Facility to be a safe space. And to be honest, I mean, I say all the time, um growing up in Savannah, I have some, I had exposure to some of the best parking recreation facilities. And I was not exposed to alcohol or drugs in the parks that I was allowed to participate in. And I would want our kids to have that same experience. Now, some things we can't control. Um and we're even adding more park rangers to make sure that we can control it more. I would like to see what happens, and this came up. Because we weren't trying to do a free-all policy for alcohol to be in parks. We said specific facilities, like the tennis center. Uh when we had certain events, special events. I actually recommended that it be only for council and mayor. Um special permitted approved events, meaning that we take it on a case-by-case basis. We bring it before council. But I would like to see something that will indemnify the city. Um and it is not true, not all parks in the City of Atlanta do allow alcohol. And so, I don't know where that came from, but but that's not true. And we're not Atlanta. And um Mayor Dickens is a strong mayor, very good mayor at that. Um and they do have staff and budget that we don't have to manage a lot of stuff. So I I think that we should look at the situation we do have. And um I would like to see where, if something like this happens, that it's not any kids around. No events where kids are allowed. Um I would like to see the same type of structure we have at the Southwest Arts Center. Wood Creek, where if somebody is serving alcohol, don't they have to have insurance? They have to have insurance. And and that in- that indemnifies the city, correct? Correct, Attorney?
Not quite indemnifies, but there's enough coverage there that should something happen. Um that they should have enough coverage. And I will tell you what's included, and then the resolution is the bare minimum. In my opinion, it should be much, much more. Um but what I didn't wanna do is chill um the opportunity by having such high um coverage limits. But that is the bare minimum.
What do we have at Wood Creek and at um Southwest Arts Center?
It's it's the same, the same that's.
I would like to see the same. I also would like for us to take it, first of all, I like your walk-on. I'm not sure why ours came back up, because as Councilmember Gomes said, it was tabled. And and to make it clear, we were not, we were told, if you go back and look at the tape, we were against making a free-for-all for all in the parks. It was just for specific events. I recommended that we do it as a special use permit for specific council events. And um and I also, because I don't see that in here. So I think it should be 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 done on a case-by-case basis. And it should have to come before this council, council approval shall approve the consumption of alcohol, mayor events. Yeah, it has to come before us for approval. And we make sure we have all those things in place. Um yes.
So um that is in there, that it would be a special use um permit, and I discussed with the Police Department, and we came up with a form. Um included on the form is also additional indemnification language in them filling out the application for the permit. I also agree with Councilwoman Bell that there should be an additional waiver just for people showing up. So in the interim, when they're being uh checked, their IDs are being checked, that's also an opportunity for them to sign an additional waiver. I can tell you, as a litigator, there is no such thing as an ironclad waiver. Um and so I think it will give an added le- level of protection, but it's not absolute.
Well, I'm not for the waiver. I am for checking IDs, because that's what is required per state law. You're supposed to be checking IDs if you're um serving alcohol. And I think that if you have a vendor that is required to have certain insurance, and only people who have insurance. We have um a special use permit that has to be approved by the council. That way, we make sure all the checks and balances, and we can just simply say no. If it's events that we know that's gonna bring problems and that we're not comfortable with. Um and I just wanna make sure that the the there's this residence, the children. And the liability to the city is almost zero to none. And I'm gonna make it clear, I do not want alcohol in all our parks around our kids, especially around our, you know. They sneak and do it anyway. We leave and we see the the Tito bottles and everything, and our cops are doing a good job. And it's less, because they are cracking down and they are throwing people out of our parks that's violating our park rules. But this should be very limited. It should be narrow in scope. It should be special use permit. It should be approved, and it should make sure, we should make sure whoever's serving is certified, has insurance. And um it does not put the city at any risk of liability. That's, that's where I am. And I don't, I think it should, yes, that's, that's it. Thank you.
Okay, before we go through our second round, is there anyone who hasn't already spoken on this? All right. Before I speak, I just want to just clarify a couple of things. The Councilwoman Bell, your event is?
Saturday.
Is Saturday. And when you said Attorney Kelly that we have the bare minimum, does that mean that we also have the bare minimum at Southwest Arts Center and Wolf Creek?
So I wouldn't necessarily word it that way. What's required in the resolution is the bare minimum insurance that they can have. It's encouraged that they have more.
Got you. So, so we, we, the recommendation is to raise it at Wolf Creek? Okay. And then why is this a walk-on item? Was this not discussed in the agenda meeting?
There was a discussion about having a second option, but because it wasn't enough time to get it in the portal for the requisite amount of days, by the time we had the agenda meeting, it was going to be a walk-on item.
Okay. So, so I, I'm, I want to first say that I, that I am conflicted. I really believe in our parks and I really believe in having safety in our parks. When funds are cut, the parks are usually the first to be impacted. One of the reasons, one of the many reasons we became a city, a father of, one of our city fathers is here. But like, one of the many reasons we became a city is that when everyone else incorporated under whatever, whatever amendment that was at the, at the state level, I can't think of the guy's name now. All of the money that was raised in those cities came out of the county budget. The parks budget was cut. The year that I was sworn in, there was a body found in Creole Park. My first city council office was in Creole Park. Like, I opened my office in Creole Park. I brought the park rangers, it was a program that I had seen in Miami. I brought that to the city of South Fulton. And so I think the safety is, 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 is a paramount concern. We are not Atlanta, but we are nearly a hundred square miles with a hundred thousand people. We are not Peachtree City. We are not East Point. You know, we are, we are the second largest city in the metro area. And one of the things that our, our residents consistently come to us about is a lack of things to do right in our city. Like people are attending events in other places and they're saying, they're coming out and saying, why can't we do these things? And so self-insurance is a huge thing. It doesn't, this doesn't need to be in my office. Oh, I don't, I mean, I'm not going to be here. So whoever's office you put in is fine. But given the struggles that we have had with Karma, Madam City Manager, I'm, I'm assuming that we've had some kind of conversation about becoming self-insured. I know that that's not going to happen in next year's budget. Like, how like, you know, like, like we just, how do we, how do we get there from here? We have, we also have bought all of this land. We have these new park facilities. So if there are places, if there are places that, as we're building new parks, that we build to host these sorts of things, I think that that is something to consider. It, it may be that the budget for council events may need to be larger. I don't know if this becomes a signature event or a secondary event and you host it in a private event space. Like, you know, there's the, there, there are places on all national to like, that might be better to like have the event that's, that's not in a park, that's not a park space. What concerns me though is that we're talking about it now and the event is already advertised and it's for Saturday. And so the idea that we are going to do another special events process for alcohol council events gives me grave concern because this was approved in a special events process months ago. Like, and so like, this is a conversation that we should have had when we approved this as an event or when people bought a calendar. I'm sure we have special events that are about to be approved tonight. But like, like that's something that we gotta, we gotta just think about these issues. We gotta think about these issues of timing. So I'm for whatever the, the body is for. But I do want to make sure that we're thinking about like a long-term solution for how we bring events to our city. And I, and I will say that there is a bit of a concern. The other problem is that when we have these special exceptions for council events, we get pressure from people to turn their event into our event, right? And that, and we've seen that happen. Like, people are having all kinds of events that we never had, that other cities don't have. But like, they're being hosted through council members because our, our residents want to have stuff. So like, I think we just, whatever we decide tonight will be a short-term solution. But I hope that we will continually work on a long-term solution, including our summer concert season is coming up. So if like, we need to readjust what we're asking for in insurance, like that's, we have, we didn't talk about it, but we have Juneteenth in thirty days. I haven't heard anything about that. So like, you know, they're just, you know, I hope that we're thinking long-term and not just these sort of quick fix walk-on solutions. And with that, Councilwoman Sebastian, it's your second time.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Madam City Attorney, you mentioned earlier that there was a case that was settled for thirty million dollars. Is there anything at all that we can do that will make it ironclad that the city, if something is held in one of our facilities, that will make it that the city cannot be named party to contributing if something happens with someone who will turn one of those events?
Absolute ironclad? No. There's things that we can do to make it more difficult. And even with a waiver, even if someone says, I promise to never sue the city of South Fulton for anything I do here tonight or anything that happens afterwards. I've had enough litigation experience to know that even with signing that, they're still going to sue us and that's still going to incur costs. And, and I'm the one that processes these litigation invoices. I could tell you they're not cheap. So is there a way to make it ironclad? No. Are there things that we can do to make it more difficult and protect the city as much as possible? Yes.
Okay, that's my only question. Okay. One more thing I will add, Madam City Manager, and this goes back to our previous conversation about electric vehicles. We said that the charges that we were implementing, one of the reasons that I've been really keen on this process is because we do live in an electric vehicle desert. And so that means for those of us, I'm a person that takes Uber places. For those of us who take Uber places, it's, it's more expensive, the rides are longer. I don't know if you know the automation that's coming, there are these Waymo drivers. So like, they are autonomous vehicles. They're already being licensed in our area. And it's going to be more expensive to not have one than to have one because they're going to try and get people to have them. They're all Teslas. Just that is, it is what it is. And so we need places for them to charge. The places that I've been that have fast charging stations, like the Walmart in East Point, there are always people there and there are a lot of Uber drivers that hang out there. So we, we just need to be thinking about having, having a place like that. And I brought it to the attention of, of management that Publix might be a place where we can do that. Though, though, those are partners that are interested. They only own one lot. It happens to be in District Three and that's a Greystone lot. So that in addition to partnering with Georgia Power, we want to make sure that we're talking to Greystone as well. Madam City Manager.
Hi, so I forgot one thing with my report. Can I have a point of privilege? Like, one second. So we do have some new key employees, employees that I want to introduce to you. And so I would like them to stand up is Jeffrey Moss is Assistant Chief of Training for Fire. Welcome. Phaedra Wright, Civil Engineer. And I want to say for the record, we have two senior civil engineers who are females in our city. That is highly uncommon. Bethany White, welcome, Assistant City Attorney. And William Whitaker, our new procurement director. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right, thank you. All right, Mr. Clerk, please sound the next item.
Brings us to executive session if necessary.
All right, the chair will entertain a motion to go into executive session. Wait, I'm sorry, just before, before, before that, I do have discussion. Our zoning hearing is scheduled for?
Five P M.
For five P M. And we have, some of, we have, some of the cases have been knocked out. So if we could hold executive session and go and handle the zoning stuff, I think that we might have time between five and seven P M. All right. All right, so the chair will entertain a motion. All right, is there a second?
Second.
All right, let's take this vote by a show of hands. Awesome, we're going to go ahead and roll on over into our zoning and alcohol public hearings. We're actually going to wait until five is advertised five. So we, everyone, you have a two-minute bio break. We'll see you back here in two Episcopalian minutes. You can start the feed. Mr. Clerk, would you please sound the roll? Mr. Clerk, would you please sound the roll? Thank you.
Excuse me. This is the roll call for the May thirteenth, five P M Alcohol License Zoning Public Hearing Meeting. The Honorable Catherine F. Royal, District One.
Present.
The Honorable Carmelita Gomes, District Two.
Present.
The Honorable Helen Z. Willis, District Three.
Present.
The Honorable J.C. Sebastian, District Four.
Here.
The Honorable Keisha B. Bell, District Five.
Here.
The Honorable Natasha Williams Brown, District Six. The Honorable Linda B. Pritchett, District Seven.
Here.
And the Honorable Mayor Colleen.
Present.
Mr. Mayor, you have a call. Please sound the first item.
Mr. Mayor and members of council, that brings us to Roman numeral three, alcohol license rezoning variants and modification cases for presentation and public hearing only. We do have one request for deferral and two withdrawals. The first deferral requested is KC twenty-five dash zero zero seven by Beverly J. Cerros Foundation Care of Five Point Development, requesting the rezoning from A G one in the South Fulton Parkway Overlay to C two zoning to operate a restaurant on one acre. It's located in District Three. Staff recommendation is denial. Planning Commission recommendation was deferral to their next planning commission meeting.
All right, the chair will entertain a motion.
July the twenty-third. That's correct.
For those watching, we have no meetings in June. All right, is there a motion?
Hope to defer to July twenty-third, did you say?
Second.
All right, and this is the first deferral?
That's correct.
Okay. We just want to, that's been an issue. So we just want to track all of those going forward. All right, please sound the next item. I'm sorry, we need to take that by a vote. Is everybody in the queue? Let's take that vote in the queue. I was going to say you got several people not in. I'll take that vote by a show of hands.
Court, that motion approved unanimously to defer. Seven zero.
All right, please sound the next item.
Next item, it's item B, KC twenty-four dash zero zero four by Resurgence Consulting LLC requesting rezoning from C U P to T R in the Cliftondale Overlay District to develop forty-four townhomes. The applicant is also seeking to change the future land use from suburban neighborhood to suburban neighborhood two. This is located in District Three. Staff recommendation is denial. Planning Commission recommendation is denial. And according to staff, a withdrawal is requested.
Mr. McClendon?
I have a question.
Wait, would you, would you just verify that?
That, that is verified and I, I believe the clerk misstated, this is Z twenty-five dash zero zero four. This applicant has requested a withdrawal of this case.
All right, we'll begin, as is always our practice, with District Representative Councilwoman Willis.
Allowing a withdrawal, will it allow the applicant to bring this back at any time?
That is correct.
Um, we have residents who have consistently showed up to hear this case. And, um, is the applicant here?
They are not.
Okay, are any residents here? Okay, I would, I, I don't wanna withdraw, I wanna move forward with hearing the case. Because we've given the applicant ample time to, to appear. And I think it's unfair to the residents that, who have consistently showed up at every meeting, to speak for this council. So, no, I, I don't want to allow the withdrawal. I want to move forward with the process so we can go ahead and vote. Thank you.
And with that, the Chair will entertain a motion.
I move that we, I, do I have to motion anything?
Okay.
I'm not...
So, we're gonna just start the public hearing? All right, um... I'm gonna go ahead and open the public hearing. We've heard that the applicant is not present. Are there any speakers, Mr. Clerk, that are in support? All right, I'm sorry, there's a question by the attorney. Madam Attorney, do you have some different information that the applicant is here?
Is the applicant here? No.
Okay. That was, that was, uh, previously stated. The, um... So now we're gonna go to, uh, those speakers who are in opposition, and... Let me just give you, I'm gonna just one second. Yes, um... Mr. Clerk, do you have any speakers against?
Yes, sir, we did, did receive one card from Ms. Shelley Harris.
All right, now are there any other speakers that are against that are present? All right, I'll just ask if you all would line up at the podium, beginning with Ms. Harris.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Dr. Shelley Harris, and I reside at 4296 Shamrock Drive. And I am the president of the HOA community at the retreated Jones Mill. So last time I gave you guys an acronym as to why we don't want the townhomes being built. But I wanted to bring you some statistical data as to why we also do not want these townhomes, um, being developed in our community. So number one, according to the Institute of Transportation and Engineers, it says that townhome developments can generate eight to 12 trips per unit per day, significantly more than the single-family homes, which generates six to eight trips per unit. This can cause a substantial amount of congestion in areas where roads are not designed to handle increased traffic volumes. Another interesting point was, according to Freddie Mac Study on Property Values and Density, studies show that high-density housing, housing-like townhomes can lead to a 5% to 20% reduction in property values within one-quarter mile of the development. This impact is often linked to concerns over congestion, con, noise, and the mismatch in the character of the neighborhood. There's also a strain on utilities. The higher density and more residents place a 30% to 50% increase on demand utilities compared to single-family homes, as noted by the University of California and the American Planning Association. Now, while we're not opposed to progress being developed in the community, but we want it to make sense. Thank you.
All right, and as the next speaker comes, I should've said that we do need you to state your name and address when you start. You will have 10 minutes as a group, so you wanna watch the clocks here. They're also located on the side screens here. And, uh, you may wanna reserve some of the balance of your time for anyone who wants to come after you would speak, so, your time starts now, please state your name and address.
My name is Dana Norris, retired Lieutenant Colonel, U.S. Army. Uh, 4359 Shamrock Drive. Just, uh, speaking to what Ms., excuse me, Dr. Harris alluded to. Having numerous meetings with the individual who chooses to erect, I believe it was 40 units, 40 units in a 16-acre, uh, area, in which 16 acres is not usable. Believe, uh, it was, uh, eight acres that was usable out of the 16. The original development was for 12 additional units. So to erect townhomes, understanding that they would be vertical, you're looking at an additional, let's just say, two cars per home. Now, if you're looking at 48 to 50, you double that amount. The congestion in our neighborhood alone, you cannot move a first responder vehi- vehicle, as it's been proven before. We've, many times, we've had to wait on individuals who, uh, one who had a stroke, another who had a seizure, and first responder vehicles could not move because there was parking on the street. In which we understand the city has a no parking on the street ordinance, however, it's not enforced. So, we're looking at trafficability within that area being doubled. That does not suffice what we currently have in the neighborhood. To include, as a civil engineer, not practicing civil engineering in the city of South Fulton, we understand that with the influx of additional individuals comes crime, along with public transportation, which is also around the area, um, due to the warehouses that are being built. But to foresee additional homes being built in this area when we have apartment complexes there on Derrick Road, there on Stonewall Tale, it seems like there's too much building going on. And that does bring a big cause to the property value that we have. We do not want to see our property value going down. It's, it's moving at a snail's pace to go in the upper tick, in which it baffles me as to why. However, the previous builder left without completing construction. Our concern is with this builder. He wants to come in, build these additional 40 townhomes. He's already started moving with dredging and cutting down trees, as if there's already been approval. That raises concern. We do not want this in our neighborhood. If somehow, some way, this is getting approved, which under table, roundabout, what have you, we do not want that entrance coming on Shamrock Drive. It can go on some other route, but not our individual neighborhood. We've already spoke to the, uh, to the, um, proprietor. We've made it known how we feel about this. But he has no concern for what we're asking for. What we're asking for you, Mayor and the board, is to hear what we're asking of you and say no. This is not what we want. We're the taxpayers, we're the people, we're saying no. I yield my time to anyone else who would like, who needs to speak.
All right, that, I'm gonna go ahead, seeing and hearing no one else, I'm gonna go ahead and close the public meeting, or close the, the public hearing, and turn it over, uh, to council for questions and comments, beginning, as is always our practice, with the District Representative, Councilwoman Willis.
Thank you for coming. Uh, all the residents that live in the area that oppose this, if you're here, can you please stand up? I need to see who you are. Okay. I wanna thank you for your due diligence, for coming consistently, um, to these meetings. I know it has been a lot, it has been a lot of miscommunication. And, um, I appreciate your engagement. And, um, this will be voted on at the next city council meeting. So I would encourage you all, um, to attend the next city council meeting. You shall be allowed to speak on anything that's on the agenda to be voted on, up to two minutes. So I would encourage that all, you know, speak up to two minutes on, uh, whatever they have to say regarding this case, so that my colleagues can hear, um, your concerns. Thank you again for your engagement, and I see you and hear you. Thank you.
All right, also on the queue is Councilwoman Pritchett.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I just wanted to, um, make this clear, because I hear, um, I understand how people may feel about their specific community where they live in, but I do wanna make it clear that, um, when I hear people having problems with townhouses, I just want people to understand that people live in townhouses. Just like we hear nationally, a lot of comments made about immigrants being here and people just committing crimes for whatever reason, just because of who they are, or their ethnicity, or their race. I just think that we have to be very mindful about what we're saying related to townhouses. I live in a townhouse. Uh, townhouses are a place for people to live. And this city will have townhouse development projects where it makes sense. And I understand that perhaps that doesn't make sense in this community, but I do want people to know, or make sure, that we're not giving anyone the impression that this city is going to be anti-townhouse. Uh, many of the development meetings that I have, uh, attended, or zoning seminars, um, I just came from a policy conference in California, and we've talked about the fact that in the state of Georgia, we are maxed out with single-family housing. And that mixed-use development, where either it's apartments, or apartments with retail, or townhouse, and single-family hu- housing, a combination of all of that is the direction that we're heading, where we're at, and what we're gonna do. So I just want people to understand that townhouse is not a bad thing. I live in a townhouse, and I don't have any more crime than anybody else that lives in a single-family house. And I don't have any shame about living in a townhouse. Um, so I just wanted to make that clear, so that, um, people that are listening don't feel that there is a stigma, a negative stigma on townhouses. There is nothing wrong with it. My aunt, the late great Celia Cruz, she lived in a townhouse, uh, before she died. That townhouse was half a million dollars, um, about third, 20, dun, about 30 years ago, she bought it for half a million dollars. It had an elevator in it with a telephone in the elevator. It was a really nice townhouse, yet it was a townhouse. There is nothing wrong with townhouses. And with that, I yield.
Councilwoman Sebastian?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We had a recent presentation from the ARC on the, um, for the housing study in the city. And one of the things that the experts say is, we need to diversify our housing. And that we are suffering from the lack of adequate housing for seniors to downsize, and for young professionals to get their, their home situation, um, secured. But, having said all of that, it's all about the right places and the quality of the building. And where we will locate, and the type of products that we're willing to accept. I think that's what it's all about. And so for this particular one, based on what I'm hearing, i- it appears as if it's, it may not be the right fit. And I am very concerned that I'm hearing things about trees being cut and dirt being moved. So my question for staff, is there current land disturbance permit for that property? Because if there's not one, then we have some sort of issue. Cause it, see, when people do that, as was sort of suggested, seems as if there's some sort of deal being cut, and I just, I don't like that kind of language. Because we're city council members, we have a, we have almost 100 square miles of city, and we don't know what happened on every block in, in every community. And so we depend on the public to report stuff to us, so if somebody's moving trees and cutting trees before the process is finished, then that needs to be reported to staff. When they cut the first tree, report it to staff, so that staff can get on it. So, Mr., Mr., um, Managing Director, do you know if there's an existing LDP?
There is not an existing LDP on that property. No.
Okay, so I'll leave that into your hands, the deal. Thank you.
The Chair recognizes Councilwoman Willis.
Thank you. To put it back in context with this specific case, my residents who have spoken candidly with me about this, their concern is not being anti-townhomes, their concern is that they purchased their homes in a single suburban neighborhood community. They have a HOA. This is what they have invested in. And this community was not planned to have townhomes. And this particular developer wants to now turn the suburban neighborhood to a suburban 2 neighborhood, where townhomes are allowed, which would interrupt the, uh... the character of the community and the quality of their life that they're invested in, and put 44 townhomes. Wow, I'm not anti-townhomes, I'm not anti-appartments, I'm not anti-renting, I'm not anti-any of that. We do have to have a diversity of stock, but specific to this case, this is wrong. And staff has recommended denial. Planning Commission has repen- represented, has recommended denial, because it is not in accordance to our land use code. And I do hear and see my residents, and I do support their, uh, grievances. And I don't think any of them are anti-townhome, anti rental, anti-apartments. It's just that what they chose to make their investment was not, this was not in the plan, townhomes were not in the plan for this particular community. And they feel that they're being infringed upon. And so, they have showed up time and time again to voice their concerns. These men, these meetings have been deferred. They have had meetings and have not received proper communication from the developer. I have not received any communication from the developer, developer. They've had miscommunication. If you recall, you saw a whole bunch of orange shirts here at the last meeting, cause they thought this was going to be heard. And, um, I don't think it was fair for us to continue to put them through this and a withdrawal, and then they end up possibly back here another 30 days later, going through the same process again, when, as residents, we asked residents to engage, to come speak up, and to come voice their concerns. And when they have done their part, as a governance, we must do our part. So I don't, I hope people won't take offense to residents voicing their concern about what's specific to their community and what's happening to them. Because that's what's happening. Someone is trying to infringe upon their quality of life and bring townhomes into a community that was zoned and planned to be suburban neighborhood to a suburban 2 neighborhood, and bring 44 townhomes in it. And that's not right in their eyes. And they feel like their quality of life is being interrupted. Staff has recommended denial, and the Planning Commission has recommended denial. And I will see all of you all at the next council meeting, and I will look forward to hearing your public comments. Thank you again for your engagement.
Mr. Clerk, please sound the next item.
Mr. Mayor, that brings us to item C, KC-25 dash 012. Applicant is requesting a rezoning from MIX in the South Fulton Parkway Overlay District to C1 to construct a bank on 1.01 acres land at 5290 Campbellton Fairbairn Road. It's located in Council District 3. Staff recommendations approval. Planning Commission recommendations approval.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. This is KC-25 dash 012. This, um, property, um, at 5290 Campbellton Fairbairn Road, was property that originally was in a mixed-use, um, development that is seeking to be rezoned out of that mixed-use development uh, into a C1 zoning district, uh, for the construction of a bank. into a C one zoning district for the construction of a bank. Staff and Planning Commission recommend approval.
Hi, I'm sorry, are you the applicant?
Uh, yes, I'm here on behalf of the applicant.
All right. Mr. Clerk, do we have any speakers against?
Thank you.
Are you Ms. Like, was it? I don't know. That's the applicant.
Yeah, it's Ashley Vanderland.
Yes, this is the applicant. That's the only currently we have. Are there any, I'm just asking, are there any speakers in opposition?
Uh, no, sir.
Okay. So first, I'm gonna open the public hearing.
Thank you.
And let you know that you do have ten minutes. You may want to reserve some of the balance for your time for rebuttal, but there will also be time for questions. You don't have to use that entire ten minutes, and please start by stating your name and address. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Ashley Vanderland. Address is seventeen seventy-six Peachtree Street, Atlanta, Georgia, three zero three nine. I'm here this evening on behalf of the applicant requesting a, requesting approval of rezoning for the development of a Fifth Third Bank. Where am I pointing? There we go. So we have, we're before you tonight with support from staff and also from the Planning Commission. Fifth Third Bank, been around for a while, first created in eighteen fifty-eight, is now a leader in the financial industry. It became the first financial institution to create a charitable foundation in nineteen forty-eight, and it continues to partner with communities in various ways. They have programming, including classes or programs focused on financial empowerment, and they look forward to continuing this at all, in all communities where they, where they're planted. Fifth Third has several branches in Georgia, but this would be their first location in the city of South Fulton. So as I said, this is an application to rezone the property at fifty-two ninety Campbellton Road. It's currently zoned M I X, and we're requesting to rezone it to C one. The current zoning M I X does allow the financial institution use, but there are some outdated conditions on the property, and the cleanest way to move forward with the, with the development of the bank is with the rezoning. So that's why, that's why we're here this evening. So the property is located also in the South Fulton Parkway Overlay. This rezoning request wouldn't change that. The propos, the proposed bank, the property at issue, is in the character area, the community live-work, and the proposed rezoning, C one, is consistent with that character area. The applicant's proposal is also in compliance with the development regulations in C one and also the regulations in the overlay, so we're not seeking any variances. As you can see, the, the property itself is where, it's where that red teardrop is located in that aerial photo. So it's fronting Campbellton-Fairburn Road, it's in between Thompson Road and Hall Road. It is the last vacant parcel in that strip of commercial properties. The other businesses in that strip include a Chick-fil-A, a Waffle House, then you get to this vacant parcel, then you have a tire store, a gas station, and other fast-food restaurants. So it's really appropriate, given the, the use is appropriate, given the other businesses in that strip, and they all complement each other quite nicely. So there's already access to the property from Campbellton-Fairburn Road. As you can see, that curb cut is already existing. There are no plans to add an existing curb cut on Campbellton-Fairburn Road. In addition to this access to the property from Campbellton-Fairburn Road, there's also a road that runs parallel to Campbellton-Fairburn behind the property. So people that need to go left out of the, out of the development can go to the stoplights at Hall or at Thompson to make that left turn. Also facilitating access for pedestrians, you'll see that sidewalk goes right up to that curb cut. The development plans do include extending the sidewalk up onto the property so people can access the property easily that way. There will be a small drive-through around the back of the building. It will feature a small canopy. This is to make the, the banking services more accessible and more convenient for customers. Should customers decide they want to come in, there's ample parking, and the building itself is nineteen hundred square feet, so a decent size. And yeah, so you can see from these renderings right here, the space itself is contemporary, it's fresh, it really meets the current needs of, of banking customers today. In the corner of this rendering, you can see there's meeting space, actually, there's several meeting space opportunities throughout the, throughout the rendering. Also, they intend to offer like a coffee lounge where people can come, they can show up early, and they can linger after their appointments with the bankers. They can use the Wi-Fi, they can do work there. There's gonna be a library of banking resources, so all in all, a great, a great asset for the community. Thank you again for your time this evening. I'm happy to answer any questions you might have, and I'll reserve the rest of my time for rebuttal.
All right, thank you. There are no speakers in opposition, is that correct? All right, I'll go ahead and close this public hearing and open for council comments and questions, beginning as is always our practice with the District Representative, Councilwoman Willis.
No questions, just comment, well, I do have a question. You said meeting space, so will, will the applicant be open to community meetings being hosted at the bank? Is that what the meeting space is for, is it for investment meetings?
Yeah, thanks for asking that. The, the meeting space, I think when I was speaking about it, was specifically in reference to providing space for the banking relationship between the bank employees and the customers, but I'm glad you brought that up. Community engagement is very important to Fifth Third Bank. The branch manager will act as the conduit for, for community engagement, and I'm sure that would be something they would be willing to speak about if they, if this space was needed.
Okay, once this process, zoning, rezoning process is complete, do you have any anticipation on when they anticipate construction and going to, going, once they get, well, getting the land disturbance permit and starting construction and completion?
Yeah, unfortunately, I don't have a specific time for you at the moment, but I do anticipate that, that it would happen, that momentum would move forward.
All right, we vote on this at the next council meeting. We don't vote today. Thank you for your presentation.
Thank you very much.
I'm looking forward to this. Thank you.
All right, thank you. And just for those of you all who are here, that we are voting in the next meeting, that is the twenty-seventh, which is the day after Memorial Day.
Yes, it is.
Okay, just want to make sure so y'all, y'all know. Enjoy your Memorial Day, we'll be back here on that Tuesday. All right. Mr. Clerk, please sound the next item.
Thanks, thank you.
That brings us to letter D, which is Z twenty-four dash zero-three-three. Applicant is requesting rezoning from A G one to C U P to develop subdivision with two hundred thirteen single-family detached homes and one existing single-family dwelling on one hundred nineteen point three-six acres at zero seven-three-six-one, seven-three-five-seven, seven-three-six-five, Ono Road, located in District Four. My understanding is the applicant is requesting withdrawal of this case.
That is correct.
All right. Are there any speakers for or against here tonight?
This is, this is a request for withdrawal.
Okay.
If, if we would like to.
Yeah, I'm gonna get a motion, I just wanted to make sure that there was nobody here that, you know. This is the applicant. Go ahead, I'm gonna go ahead and.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. My name is Michelle McCauley. I work with Gaskins-Lacraux. We're located at thirty-four seventy-five Corporate Way in Duluth, Georgia. We are requesting deferral tonight. I'd like to thank Councilwoman Sebastian and all the members of the Ono Road community for all of their input. Yes? Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to say deferral, withdrawal. We are requesting withdrawal. I didn't even notice I had said that. But I'd still like to thank Councilwoman Sebastian and the community. We had a lot of community engagement. Ultimately, the decision was made that this was not the right location for this project for Century Communities, and they look forward to moving forward with other projects in the city, but they want to withdraw at this time. Thank you.
All right. The chair will entertain a motion for withdrawal.
So, Mayor, motion to withdraw?
Second.
All right, it's been properly moved and seconded. Let's take this vote in the queue. All right, please sound the next item.
Brings us to item E, K Z twenty-five dash zero-zero-six. Applicant is requesting rezoning from A District, medium-sized apartment in the old National Highway Overlay District to T R for the purpose of constructing fifty townhomes on eight-point-five-three acres of land. This is located in Council District Six. Staff and Planning Commission recommendation is denial.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. K Z twenty-five zero-zero-six at Zero O National Highway, I believe is the address that we're you, or Zero McGee Landing, I believe, is the address that we're using, is in a, a community that was originally zoned for apartments, but the applicant is now seeking to rezonate for townhouse residential, and they're seeking to repurpose that plat of property for townhouses. It's eight-point-five-three acres of land. We, staff and planning commission both recommend that denial. We did receive a new, staff's recommendation of denial is based on the site plan that was presented. We did receive a new site plan from this applicant, I believe on, on yesterday. We haven't had time to, to quite dig all the way into that site plan from what we did see. We still don't believe we, that site plan would meet all of our requirements for us to be able to consider changing our recommendation from denial to approval. So at this time, staff's recommendation will remain denial. And of course, planning commission, planning commission's recommendation is denial as well.
There, Mr. Attorney McClain, can I just, just because it's maybe not explicit in our packets, were there reasons for denial given by the Planning Commission?
I don't know if that's, I don't know if it's in your packet or not, but council would have received an email that would have had the minutes as well as the video of the Planning Commission meeting, that would have had an explanation of Planning Commission's reasonings for their denial recommendation.
Okay, they, they were basically in alignment with the, the C D R As.
I believe that is the case.
Okay, perfect. All right. I'm gonna go ahead and open the public hearing. Mr. Clerk, are there any speakers for or against?
Yes, we have the applicant present, and then we have one speaker in opposition.
All right, I think you guys know how this goes. Please come up here, you got ten minutes, you don't have to use all the time, you may reserve some of the balance for your time for rebuttal, or just not at all. Please start by giving us your name and address.
Absolutely. My name is Garrett Christopher with Christopher Construction. I'm here on behalf of the UConnie Brothers. My address is thirty-four eighty-one Lakeside Drive, that's Atlanta, Georgia. The development we have is the landing at McGee Landing. That's gonna be the new name for it. As you can see, McGee Landing is actually already developed. It's a defunct community from, originally started in two thousand nine, building became, development started and building, construction unvertically started in two thousand ten. This community went bankrupt. Originally, it was intended as housing, that's what we were also proposing. It was zoned as apartments. There are twenty-nine individually-platted parcels as it stands today, and those can be individually owned. The neighborhood went defunct, and it is a fully-developed neighborhood, all utilities are in. Essentially, at the time, it was the wrong product at the wrong time, and it went into foreclosure, and that's where we purchased it. In our last meeting with, with planning, and I'd like to hit what the staff report had later on, but the biggest thing was after the planning meeting, I was very fortunate to have a conversation with, with many of the constituents of District Six regarding what concerns are with, with developing, or redeveloping, I should say, a property like this. And I don't know if they're here, but particularly Gerald and his sister took probably forty-five minutes with us and came up with what the community doesn't want. What the general fear was is something like Camelot, and that actually came out several times. Low-income housing makes everybody very nervous, and these, what the community shared, there is a fear about rentals and how rentals go in the community and, and what kind of rentals you'll have there. There was a fear of transient or short-term tenants, and overall, just a concern with it being this, our project possibly being a detriment to South Fulton as a whole. So through that, what we do want is, there is a difference between affordable housing versus low-income housing. And what we want to put on this property is affordable housing. We want to encourage homeownership. Homeownership only raises the community. We want owners living there, not just owning there, but living there. We also, as part of the H O A that we're developing there, will put a cap of ten percent rentals on there, so the owners will be living there. And the biggest thing is, especially with its area, I don't know if you guys know where this is located, it is the defunct piece of property literally across the street from the Walmart. It's that, that gate you've seen for over a decade, and it's just set there fallow, and it's done nothing for your community. Now, what we are looking at is McGee Landing, or McGee Landing as townhomes. Originally, as stated, we put in for fifty, there are currently forty-six on our updated site plan, and I'll go to that reasoning when I go over the staff report. We developed the product because we want to put the money into the product. Talking with people of the community, every unit we have will have a two-car garage. There, we have designs for two- and three-bedroom with walk-in closets. We're looking for young professionals in the area, particularly District Six. There is actually twenty-six percent people with families, so we're gonna get those starter, those starter groups, the young professionals, and, and first-time buyers. We're also putting quality finishes in, such as quartz, like I said, the walk-in closets. As the community as a whole, we want to, again, protect that community. We're reducing the maintenance items that would drive up dues, such as gates, high-cost amenities, because we feel that if we keep the quality of the house high and the dues low, that will keep quality neighbors in there. Like I just said, my products will keep ours in the community. Our goal currently, and it's just very difficult in today's light of what's going on with the economy, our goal is to stay under three hundred thousand. We think that's a very good, good point. Statistically, that is the hottest market in, in the area off of Old National. And part of that, we've also worked with several banks. We want homeowners to be there, and, and we want our name on a good, long-lasting community. We've developed, at least as of today, we still have one hundred percent financing with twelve thousand five hundred dollars toward closing if these people use us as their primary This is a typical facade of our townhomes. As you can see, they're two-story, two-car garage, various elements on the front, on the exterior, which also is in accordance with the Old National Overlay. We have one plan called the Columbia Plan, where actually to, to value-engineer it, we actually have used the same first floor with two different upper floors. We have a two-bedroom for young professional, we have a three-bedroom for starting families. We also have another plan that's a little bit larger, more focused towards the family. In addressing that, our staff, we do want to address the staff report concerns. One of the things they had was the overlay requirements. We did go back in and add them to it, which is sidewalks throughout the entire community, trees every thirty feet. We also have the landscape strips now designated in the, on the plan. With the day, I agree, it may not be enough time to review it. We received the notes the day before the last meeting, so we weren't able to update it till now. They also had. They also had concern with the zoning requirements. One of which was, the city of South Fulton does have a seventy-five-foot buffer, whereas the state stream buffer is only twenty-five. So we did update that, we did lose four townhomes. We won't be petitioning for a variance on that. Also, some of the overlay requirements are the streetscaping, whoops, I went backwards, sorry. We also put, put out the typical lot lines, obviously those may change depending on the size of the final product that goes on. We also included the buffer setbacks, things of that nature that were required for, and hopefully we satisfied both the, the staff's need for clarification on sections four oh one and five eleven, which was specifically what they cited, they needed to be addressing. But with that being said, I appreciate your time, definitely staying this late. I would like a consideration of approving this project. As is now, it's just a fallow twenty-nine units that already zoned and proved for apartments, but we think the community would be served with townhomes. Thank you so much.
All right, are there any speakers against?
Mr. Michael Venable. This is Michael Venable, fifty-seven twenty Montalee Circle. This is absolutely amazing. Every single solitary thing you heard on this presentation was never given to the community or never given to the planning commission. We specifically asked, what are these things gonna look like? Well, I ain't got that yet. We talked about sidewalks and facades staggering the buildings. And you know why this happened? Because this has happened before where developer came in, did not have this thing, at the last minute brought it here and we just pushed it on through. You have disenfranchised this entire community because they never had a chance to look at anything that was brought forth. We keep talking about diversity, but we're not recognizing diversity. Go back and look at your notes. Every, 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 every single solitary development in this area has been a starter development. You know, people came in and talked about, well, you know, townhomes are there. Yeah, I've seen once half a million dollars. Wow, great. Never see that come up on Old National. It's not about that. This is directly beside one of the biggest commercial developments on this corridor. This thing should be pristine. It's right next to another development that is commercial, that is already gone out. You didn't show any entrance beautification. None of the things to make this look like, wow, this is really an up-and-coming area. So when someone tries to come in and develop or move into some of these commercial properties, it makes a difference. When someone comes in trying to get another business to come into the commercial corridor, that makes a difference. Anywhere in this city and in this area, you go to the commercial developments that are, I mean, the residential that are directly beside big commercial developments. Those are not considered as being affordable and they shouldn't, they don't fit. Can never get out of the, the bubble that we're in because we don't think correctly. Diversity does not only mean being over here, it also means being over here. You know, when we talk about these things and, and, and trying to get the area to come forth and, and come together, we will never get to the point that's necessary. Everybody brings up Camelot, you know why? Because that's the first image that comes in when you do developments like this that, you know, no amenities. And we use the excuse, well, we're trying to keep the price down. That shouldn't be your priority. The priority was to make sure you had a good development. You do that first, then you come back and look at some ways. Okay, well, how can we, you know, make this more affordable to certain area, to certain people and, you know, certain communities? Already have it, I need something different because it affects the area beside me, which is going to be the, the commercial area that I need more than automotive, liquor store, dollar stores, fast food restaurants. We have to change our thinking to make things better. This has never seen anything they're talking about. See, someone else did this before, I've seen a couple of developers. What should have happened, if we do policies, we should have made the developer start over from square one. You are giving staff the chance to redevelop in this, but we're gonna move it forward and it just eliminates the whole community. And we talk about, well, you know, we want community involvement in all of this. That should have been a policy. You didn't get your act together, you start over. That's what really should happen. You know, we can't move forward as a city and a community unless everybody has some sort of standard mindset that this place is going to move forward. And it can't just be on certain parts of the city, it has to be on the entire city. And if policies should come from you and if you think this is cool for somebody to come in and just not have their act together and then at the eleventh hour come in and give you a presentation, look what just happened, the staff denied it. What happened, the planning commission denied it. I was there, the same concerns they had were the same ones here. That we didn't try to make anything better, we just did the same old thing, brushed it along and then tried to get everybody scared, well, you know, we got an abandoned place over here, you don't need to be frustrated. It's not how it is, you know, the knee-jerk reaction. Make sure that you can get something together that's gonna be good so that someone will be said, okay, I've got a nice Walgreens facility, maybe I can move my business into there. Then I have different things within the, the plaza with Walmart, well, maybe I can get a new business in there. Appearances mean a whole lot. Look at the area right now. The townhomes behind Kroger are gated. The townhomes behind Walmart are gated. Those are not classified as what you would call starter homes. You've got an area that you had the convenience and so, yes, that should be costing more. Can't move forward unless everybody cooperates. And we have some rules that it would never happen within any of the other districts in this city. But it happens here. And that's why we had the failing communities such as Camelot and Summer Tree over here. When they lacked having their amenities, that's when it went down. And we're thinking right now, well, you know, you ain't gotta have that. Yes, you do. You gotta have some facades that look like it's about something. You have to have your sidewalks, you have to have your staggered setbacks. You've got a long entrance to this thing that should be glorified with plants and landscaping all up and down. Doesn't show that, didn't think about it. Hey, but it's your decision, so I'm telling you as a community member, this is not appropriate for the area, what he's trying to do. I'm sorry, this needs to be voted no.
All right, you do have two minutes for rebuttal.
No, I appreciate very much what you had to say and I do want to meet with you afterwards. We, we saw each other last time. And actually, a lot of what you had to say incorporated into what we presented to you tonight. And I, I appreciate what he's trying to say about increasing the value, but the value isn't always increased by price. The value is increased by what the community demands. And right now, there are market studies that say three to three twenty-five is what sells. I love building small houses, big houses, little ones, but my favorite house to sell or to build is the one that sells. And that's what i- is important because if you have a languishing community because you priced too high, it's just gonna languish and it'll be McGee Landing two point oh. So we believe we put forth a product that, price-wise, hits the ticket demand for the area. As far as amenities, we actually worked with several other communities nearby. Several of them actually consider the amenities a crime hazard. Like for instance, all the ones in the pool nearby actually have to hire security staff to keep non-community members out. So, or at least the ones, the two that we talked to, I'm sorry, I won't say for all of them. So we believe we do put, put a big product, a very good product out there, again, long-term for the community because in agreeance, we don't want a Camelot. That's what I heard throughout. So I hope there is some area in between where we can work that out and move forward with the project. So thank you so much.
All right, with that, I'm gonna go ahead and close the public hearing and then go to Council, comments and questions beginning as is always. Our process with Councilwoman Williams Brown, District Representative.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you for the presentation. If I could just kind of make, have several, several things, but just right off the bat, if we could not include references to Camelot into this discussion. I hear from the residents, I hear their sentiments. But I think that, that is a very, that is a very sensitive subject on both sides. I know you don't, you probably don't know that, but that is a very sensitive subject on both sides. So if we could not have any thing with Camelot wrapped up in this. I do, and, and I do appreciate that you went back and updated the site plan. I am concerned that the staff has not had a chance to dig into it and that the community has not had a chance to review it as well. And I don't, as, as someone who's been try, you know, I've been trying to get something in that space. You know, 'cause I'm, I'm tired of driving by it multiple times a day and it's just, you know, overgrown weeds. But my question to you is, can we defer this out to give you and your staff and C D R A and the community time to get together, to get on the same page, to try, try to address some of things, these things? I don't want to rush this through. I don't want to ignore either the recommendations or the feedback from the community. You know, as I shared with you, this has been a project that has been the bane of our existence for, you know, now rolling up on, on close to twenty years. So is it possible that we can, it's May, we don't meet in June. Is it possible that we can defer this out to July? We should give enough time to circle the square and address some of the things that have been heard, that have been said.
Councilwoman Williams Brown, if that is your motion, you can make it.
Oh, well, then that is my motion. I would move to defer until, I need Reggie or somebody with C D R A to help me.
I guess for a meeting date, July twenty-third, twenty-seventh, second?
The que, the question is, what's the, what are the meeting dates in July?
When is the next meeting date after the twenty-seventh? Because if we, if we defer it, it's not the twenty-seventh, so when is the next meeting? Of July. So let's, I think the twenty-second is probably better.
July twenty, July, if we, I, I move to defer this to July twenty-second so that the, the developer and C D R A and the community can get back together and work through some of these things.
It's been properly moved and seconded, is there any further discussion? All right, I have discussion. First, can we bring those plans back up? Could I see those plans? And you, and this is, uh... Cone Brothers, is that the name of the?
What's that? Uh, UConnie Brothers.
UConnie Brothers.
And this is the Lowe's Plan, which is our, our largest.
No, no, I wanted to see the site plan for the development.
Oh, the, the development?
The site plan.
Okay, yeah.
Okay, so it is how many homes?
It is now forty-six.
Forty-six, there are two-bedroom, three-bedroom?
Uh, mostly three-bedroom, we do have a two-bedroom option.
Okay. How many garages?
Uh, two-car garage with every unit.
Okay, two-car garage, how wide are the streets?
Uh, the streets are, you're gonna get me on this one, but I believe they're twenty feet wide.
I think our minimum is twenty-one, twenty-four?
It may be, I'm not, I just can't.
So they're, so they're the minimum what? And there is no, um, community center?
There is not, no.
Okay, is there green space?
Yes, everything not owned by the individual lots will be green space and there will be a dog run. We had looked into several other amenities, but like, for instance, again, like a, a play area, a park is actually burdensome as far as the liability insurance for the community. So something like a, a dog park, there's, there's no liability in that outside the general.
All right. So a couple of things I do, I wanna, I wanna thank the UConnie Brothers for their interest. I wanna thank Baba Venerable for his wisdom. This is on the east side of Old National Highway. The city of South Fulton doesn't own a park on that side. We don't own the community center on that side. And several people have died trying to cross Old National Highway. We actually have a pedestrian safety fund named after a, a, a young man who was a junior at Banneker High School who died about fifty feet from this interest, trying to cross Old National. So I don't think, I, I, I always have concerns about building residential communities directly off of a highway, a state trucking route, no less. And to do that where the children who live there will not be able to get to a city park without crossing a five-lane state road is, that, that's, that's problematic because children need to, they need outside areas every day and these are starter homes. The next thing is, we had a previous conversation about townhomes and the possibility because things are suburban too. So I have a question for our planning director when he has a second.
Now, to answer your que, your first question while, while you're waiting, there's actually a five-foot crosswalk on either side.
I got you, I'm sorry, yeah, we're, we're done, so like, this, this, uh... For the, for the... Attorney McClendon, um, there, we heard a conversation about townhomes in suburban two neighborhoods. I just wanna be clear, are there any parcels of land zoned suburban two north of Roosevelt Highway? Because I don't think there are.
That's a, that's a very difficult question for me to answer.
So I, well, you, you, you can check it, we, we, we've had this conversation before and there are. And so I think that we do need to think about diversifying where we're putting starter homes in the city. They all can't be, they, they all can't be on one side of town. There, there... And, 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 and just to correct, like, like this isn't a, like, I don't, you know, you probably didn't know about our state of the city, we just had a state of the city two weeks ago. This is not a languishing community, we are thriving. We are thriving and so we, and, and Old National looks the way it looks not because we overpriced homes and couldn't get development, we underpriced homes and couldn't get diversity. And so we, we, we do need those. The, the other, the, the other thing, other point I wanted to bring up is that McGee's Landing is a blue street. Once upon a time, there were blue street signs and this was also a conversation. Uh, with, once upon a time, there were blue street signs and this was also a conversation that we had. Uh, but these streets, you all own this land, that's correct?
Yes.
Okay, I just wanna be sure, and the, and these streets have not been needed over to the city, right? These are, these streets are owned by the developer.
Currently private and we have in the, the full plan set, uh, to complete the road to, uh, hand it over. So, actually, to actually finish the road, because of being a defunct community, it's the rough code. So, we do have plans on finishing it proper and, and curb repairs.
All right, um, and with, tho, those are, those are my, my questions and comments. All right, uh, Mr. Clerk, please sound the next item. I'm sorry, we are in the middle of the vote, uh, for a deferral. Yes, uh, Dr. Rau.
I'm not gonna spend a whole lot of time with this because I'm, I don't even know if it's really absolutely germane, but, um, as you know, back to the future land use, people are, we had these meetings, there was a lot of discussion about Old National having density, I remember this vividly. And I know one of the things you were pushing for, Mayor, was to make sure that it became like the so, you know, the, the midtown kind of the city, so it has, that's the highest density. If we wanted to change that future land use, we need to say suburban one, so I, I just wanna set that up there.
All right, um...
I will, I will say to that point, I think it's important to note for this one particular, um, piece, um, of, of land, if you, if you look at the Old National Corridor, um, for the land use, um, you'll notice that all of it is, is that purple color, which I believe is regional live work. Uh, and I think this property was left out of that specifically, um, because it already had that, it, it was already zoned for this particular development. Uh, and I think it was left at suburban two, uh, because it had already been previously platted for this apartment development. But everything else is, is a higher, um, a higher density land use. Uh, and so, it, this, this one parcel is, is different than everything else around it.
I got you, I, and, and, and I just wanna be clear that, um, high density doesn't equal low value. I, I have friends that live in midtown, actually, one of my best friends just got a five thousand dollar a month apartment, it is gorgeous. Um, so, you know, it doesn't mean that, it doesn't, it doesn't mean that. But, uh, it is something that we need to look at as we are reevaluating. Because this was platted a certain way, are there any legal limit? Because we, we've had conversations about trying to change things that were platted with the county in a certain, uh, way.
No, they, they can build what they have.
All right, um, all right, let's carry the vote.
Mr. Mayor, before we carry the vote, uh, Ms. McClendon's standing there. He wanted to clarify that we are holding this, we're deferring this item to the July twenty-second public hearing for a second public hearing. Correct?
Uh, yes, and so that, that, I, let me just ask a clarifying question. I'm as, I'm assuming that in these two months, they are going to have some community meeting or some, you know, thi, this isn't just gonna come back to us and bypass the, the Planning Commission or, 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 or community, uh, even just a CZIM. So, go ahead, Councilwoman Williams Brown.
Yes, so, so my specific request, and I will follow up with the developer, um, later to ensure that the CDRA concerns get addressed, the concerns of the residents get addressed. Um, but I will say that where this is, which was supposed to, when it was first envisioned, was supposed to be, I believe, active senior, which is what went bankrupt and has been sitting after they got all the infrastructure in. However, I'm directionally challenged, but however, if you're going from Walmart headed to my house, on the left-hand side are two sub, are two developments that are townhouses. So, the town, so townhouses already, it's two different developments. One is Madison Place and I can't think of what the other, the name of the other one is, but they are directly across from the LA Fitness Plaza. And so, this, townhouses are already there. Um, so it's not like they are proposing something that is wildly out of character with what's already sitting there. They are simply trying to finally develop a project that has been bankrupt and defunct and overgrown. I mean, it's twenty, twenty-five, four more years, it's gonna be twenty years that it's just been sitting there. Um, so I, but I am, I'll follow up with the developer to make sure that we get the community meeting scheduled, um, get the community back out to see what these new updated plans are, make sure you're working, we're working with CDRA to incorporate updates that will address, that will address all of these concerns.
So, perhaps what we can do instead of, instead of a deferral is that we can just, um, it, it, it can continue to follow its normal course, um, and we can do, do the first read and then defer the final adoption of this item until, uh, the council member and council is comfortable with, um, with what the developer ends up, um, submitting, um, as their final documentation.
So, I'm sorry, is that a recommendation to amend the motion and by, with some verbiage? Or you're saying the motion that we made is fine? Mr. Clerk, you wanna read the motion?
We have a motion by Councilperson Williams Brown, seconded by Councilmember Sebastian to defer this case to the July twenty-second council meeting.
Okay, we good, I mean, i- if, if everybody's good, I don't wanna, I just wanna make sure, I know, I know that we have other communities, people go back and forth and meet with the community three, four, ten times. I just wanna make sure we're getting that.
And, yeah, and that, that, I, what I wanna avoid is, you know, a lot of, okay, let's go back, or let's go back, let's go back. Um, I mean, obviously, this is not my area of expertise, but I, I would like to just do this deferral 'cause that'll give, today's the thirteenth, that'll give well over sixty days to try to get, circle the square, get everybody on the same page so that when we bring it back, we can just proceed without having to do a lot of back and forth, um, you know, going, going back to the community and going back to plans and stuff.
All right, we have a motion in a second, um, we have one more discussion item from Councilwoman Williams.
This is a question for you, Mr. McClendon. Um, so, staff has recommended now, the zoning, um, commission has recommended denial. So, obviously, it's against our zoning code and land use plan. And so, even with going back to the community and agreeing to whatever, is it gonna change the fact that staff is recommending denial and the Planning Commission is recommending denial? We all took training and, in our training, it pretty much said that, you know, we avoid other concerns when we comport with what our zoning code says and what staff is recommending. And so, even though, you know, we may feel a certain way and think certain things should go a certain way, is there anything that, I guess I'm trying to, is, is you all, you, this was based off of what's in our current code, correct?
That's correct. So, I, I, I'll, what I'll say is that our policy is that we don't change the recommendation after the public hearings. Um, we, we make the recommendation prior to the hearing so that either the Planning Commission or City Council understands, um, how we've, um, looked at the, at the case and analyzed the case so that while we're making these presentations, um, you all, um, understand that and you all can ask those relevant questions, um, that will help you along with making your decision. Um, once the public hearing has happened, um, it, it's, it's just my opinion that I, our recommendation honestly just isn't that important at that point. You, it, the, the decision is legislative at that point, uh, and you all can, you all make that decision, uh, at that time. Uh, and so, the, the reason why I, I was, um, asking, um, the question about why we are, um, what, what exactly we are deferring and for what purpose, um, is trying to determine if we are trying to defer the case so that we can have another public hearing or if we're deferring the case so that, or if we're just pushing out the final decision of council to a later date, um, which will then help us to determine how we're moving forward, uh, and if we're going to reevaluate the case so that we can, um, determine whether or not we're going to change our recommendation or not and, and represent that to council.
And so, in other words, you're saying that in order for, in order to really get us in compliance with our own zoning code and get a proper recommendation, then basically it would have to go back through the process?
I, I mean, they could come into compliance with the zoning code without going back through the process. Um, but we would, we wouldn't change our recommendation, we would just help them to, to come into compliance. As, as best as we could.
So, so if, if they come into compliance with the zoning code without going through the process, is that something that will be stated on the record or said to this council? I mean, because we're, 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 most of us are trying to be in compliant with the training that we set four weeks. And I mean, it was real good training, but I'm just saying, like, most of us are trying to be compliant with that. And, um, then so, if it doesn't go through the process, but it's within compliance of our code, is that something that will be directed to us or said to us?
We'll, we'll try our best, but that's why we try to do all of that on the front end.
So, let me ask this last question and I'll go. Um, no, I don't promise and I do have the floor. Um, is there anything that can be done to, to get, to, 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 for us to be in compliance with the code?
On this particular case, um, for, for us to be in compliance as a code as a, as a city or for the developer?
Well, well, not the city, the city is not trying to get in compliance with the code. The city gives the recommendation based on what is presented to them. But is there anything that a developer can do to, to be in compliance with the code? That's, that's what I'm saying.
I, I, I think this, this project can be built in accordance with City of South Fulton zoning and subdivision codes.
Thank you.
The chair recognizes Councilman Sebastian, um, Dr. Rau, you've disappeared, you're done. Okay, Councilman Sebastian.
Well, I'll just ask a quick question and this is something that I have asked, um, before. At what point in time, and I really don't need an answer right now, I just need us to think about this. And as projects move through the system, at what point in time do we determine, when it comes to us, this project has changed drastically from when it got to Planning Commission and even when staff look at it? At what point in time, and I guess my question is, can a recommendation of this council be, go back to the Planning Commission stage and then come back through the process?
Nothing in our code specifies that. So, we, we would be, i- if we were to do that, we would, we would be making that up, um, on the fly. Uh, so, my opinion is that the only way to do that would be to, to completely start the process over.
Okay, from scratch. Okay, so, um, so just for the developers in the room, I think when we have those initial meetings with the community and, and hopefully we have threatened that whole process, is to really listen and to almost put your best foot forward as a project can be done to make it financially viable. Because sometimes it feels as if, 'cause I've had this done in, um, some projects, where, use an example, the people would come and they'll say, "We're gonna put four hundred homes here." Then the committee would go, "That's like too many, better." Then they'll come back and they say, "Okay, we're gonna put three fifty." Then somewhere along the line again, they say, "We're going to two eighty." And by that time, it has gotten to us and you guys have already said, "Nope." Planning Commission have already said, "Nope." And then council now is left in the position where we're looking at the project that's much different than what Planning Commission saw and what you guys have been working with. And we would say like, "Well, this can work." But for us to make that decision at that point, it looks as if we're going against the Planning Commission and against staff. So, I don't know what the solution is, but this has happened several, several times since I've been here on council. And I think that's one of the things that we really need to try and figure out how to make that work. Because to me, I'm, I'm kind of a straight-line percentage person. If X percentage of the project changed, go back to the Planning Commission, they'll start over, right? Because we're now not looking at the same project at all. That's, that's how I feel about it. I don't know how we, we, we solve the problem, but that is a major problem in my mind.
I would agree with you and I'll say to that, um, it's already been a long meeting and I'm not gonna make it longer, but I'll say that, I'll say two things to that. One, I say this to, to our staff all the time, what we do is, is more of an art than a science. And so, we, we have to, you know, it, it's not always easy to figure out those issues. Uh, but number two, um, the tightrope that we walk is figuring out how to prosecute this process, um, in an amount of time that, that makes it make sense for, um, for the, the developer and the community and staff. Uh, and so, we're, we're trying to work out all of those issues and it not take a year. Uh, and, and sometimes that can be difficult because we're trying to, and, and, and we also need it to be, we need to be able to let the community know when these meetings are going to occur. And if we're, you know, if we're going back and forth and back and forth and back and forth, uh, then it's, it's very difficult to do that. It's already difficult to do that as it is. I mean, we're, we're already setting meetings now that are four and five months from now. So, um, that's, it's, that's the tightrope that we walk in, in what we do. So, um, we're, we're working on it and I, and I think we're getting better.
Uh, all right, well, we have a motion and a second on the floor. Would you go ahead and just review those, Mr. Clerk?
Yes, we had a motion by Councilmember Williams Brown, seconded by Councilmember Sebastian to defer this case to July twenty-second, uh, council public hearing.
All right, it's been properly moved and seconded, let's take this vote in the queue.
That motion was approved, six-zero.
Oh, okay, someone's not present. All right, um, Mr. Clerk, please sound the next item.
Brings us to letter F, case M twenty-four-dash-zero-one-one. It's a public hearing, application by Apex Sandtown LLC, Carol Williams-Wilson-Brock and Erby LLC, requesting a modification to petition number two thousand six Z-dash-zero-zero-four-zero to modify conditions one through five to change the site plan in MIX in the Sandtown Overlake District to develop seven thousand square feet of commercial and office space and one hundred seventeen single-family detached and townhome residential units at zero Cammington Road. It's located in Council District One. This case was deferred January twenty-eighth and February twenty-fifth. Council public hearings, staff recommendations denial.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Do we have an applicant here for this case? I, I don't believe we have an applicant. Uh, I believe it is, um, I believe we wanna go forward with the public hearing on this one. So, um, I'll ask that we open the hearing. with the public hearing on this one. So, um, I'll ask that we open the hearing. Staff's recommendation is denial.
All right, I'll go ahead and open the public hearing. The applicant is not here. Are there any speakers in opposition that are here?
Yes, sir. We did receive a card from Alma Hill in opposition.
All right, ah, Ms. Hill, so nice to see you again. I didn't see you there behind the column. Please come forward. You know this goes, you got ten minutes. State your name and address. You don't have to use the whole ten minutes.
Uh, good evening. I'm Alma Hill. My address is five ninety-two Birchberry Terrace Southwest. I'm in District One. Uh, I live in Promenade Oaks, the subdivision which is right next door to the proposed development. Um, I am here, uh, we have had several meetings with the developer, uh, both residents in Promenade Oaks and in Montclair Estates, which is what the development would back up to. And, um, even though the applicant isn't here, our concern is about development in general, right there, the size. At first, it was a hundred and seventeen homes, uh, which is what is before you today, and then it was modified, uh, a couple of times. But our concern is, we just had a roundabout built, um, and at Campbellton and New Hope to calm the traffic. We also recently got sidewalks in the last few years, and the housing, the development would, the, uh, exit and entrance would be on Campbellton Road, which is already very busy. Uh, one of the exits would be a right turn only on New Hope Road. And, uh, we can only imagine that a parent coming out of that development trying to get a kid to school is not going to turn right only. They're going to turn left and go to Randolph or Sandtown or Westlake. So, uh, in addition to the traffic, this was, uh, the existing zoning was approved in two thousand and six. This is a new day. We would like for you all to consider the zoning in general for that area. Um, we're working on a comprehensive development plan, and before we give away the farm, we'd like to see what that plan says about what the future should be for both this Campbellton, New Hope Road area and its impact on other areas within the City of South Fulton. So I fully support the, um, city's recommendation or the planning commission's recommendation to deny. And, uh, before anything else is done, please take a look at what that area is like now. We're getting sidewalks now on New Hope Road, which will improve our quality of life because of the walkability and more homes, whether they're townhomes, whether they're single-family residential, um, you know, we would like for you to take a serious look at development and make sure that the development is something that would be compatible with what we want both now and in the future. So that's all I have to say. I'm open for questions.
All right, thank you. We're gonna go ahead and close the public hearing and go to questions and comments, beginning as is always our practice with the district representative, Dr. Riley.
Uh, thank you, Ms. Hill, for coming out and providing com- um, public comment. As you know, we ha- as she's mentioned, we've had several meetings. I'm not sure why the developer is not here, but, um, I don't have any additional questions, um, based on kind of where we left the conversations. I don't, I don't think we got to where we needed to be.
All right, um, I do want to say I think those are, those are great, um, observations, Ms. Hill. Uh, the, one of, one of the things that happens, like, when you, when you travel places, you get to see, like, different people are doing different things. Um, when I was in Columbia, Columbia actually invented bus rapid transit, uh, over fifty years ago under their president. So like, you know, that's one of the things, I don't know if you saw that when you were there, that's one of the things you see. Um, there's also, uh, they're doing this thing around, uh, traffic circles and commercial development. There's a very famous park, Parque de Perro, happens to be part of the dog. Um, and, uh, it's, it's just amazing. It's, it's just amazing. So I think, I hope those are things that we can think about. All right, um, singing hearing, no further comments. We will, uh, have a vote on this on the May twenty-seventh meeting. All right, Mr. Clerk, please sound the next item.
That brings us to case G, uh, case Z twenty-five dash zero zero three. It's a public hearing, application by Whitney Blanco, excuse me, requesting rezoning from R-three in the Sandtown overlay district to R-four A at eighteen seventy-five Dove Drive Southwest on one point zero nine acres to accommodate the construction of four single-family homes. Pro- the property is located in Council District One. Uh, staff recommendation is actually approval now, and the planning commission recommendation is denial. Staff.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. All right, so kind of in, in immediate, um, example of what we just talked about, staff had, um, initially recommended denial, um, in this case. Um, and when this case went before planning commission, um, our recommendation was denial. Um, since that time, this applicant has presented a new, uh, site plan. Um, this was initially slated for four single-family homes, um, on about one point zero nine acres. Our, the, the, um, future land use is suburban, uh, neighborhood one, which allows a density up to, up to three units per acre. Um, and so of course, four units, um, on that one point zero nine acres is, um, more than the future land use would allow. They have, um, produced a new site plan which shows three single-family homes, um, on that site, which is now under the, um, that, that three units per acre. Um, this is at eighteen seventy-five Dove Drive. Um, planning commission's recommendation, um, was denial, um, which was in line with the, um, comprehensive plan, uh, as well. Um, in receiving the new site plan, staff has changed our recommendation to approval.
All right, so, uh, I was, just to be clear, you, you can change your recommendation, because it sounded like earlier you wouldn't change your recommendation.
Prior to the public hearing, we, as, as stated, we would, we're willing to change the recommendation-
Okay.
-with, if, if receiving new information.
Prior to the public hearing, oh, which we're about to-
Yes.
-which we're about to have. Okay, um, so confusing. I'm gonna go ahead and open the public hearing. Mr. Clerk, is the applicant, he present?
Oh, yeah, okay. I didn't receive a card from him, but, uh, I understand applicant is present, but we did not receive any cards in opposition.
Okay. All right, let's bring the applicant forth. You will have ten minutes to make a presentation. You do not have to use the entire ten minutes. You want to start by stating your name and address.
Good evening, counsel. Um, my name's Jonathan Clark. Uh, my address is seven one four seven, uh, Mount Zion Circle in Morrow, Georgia. Um, I represent the applicant. I'm actually, um, uh, will be the future architect of record. Uh, Whitney Blanco could not be present tonight. Um, but, uh, this project initially, as stated, was going to be a four, um, four to, four home development, uh, for this one point zero acre, uh, lot. We have since changed that on our new site plan to be, um, three single-family, um, homes that are comparable, uh, to the existing neighborhood. Um, in addition to this, one thing that we wanted to state is the, the, um, the owners of the lot have agreed, and we're, um, going through the process of, um, strategic planning is to actually, um, add, uh, s- new sewer connection to that, um, that thoroughfare so that the, um, existing, some of the existing homes, uh, could also tap into that as well, because right now that area is on septic. So, um, we're working with the, with the residents that are currently in that neighborhood. Um, we've had, uh, of course, our community meeting and have heard their concerns, and that was one of those. And the, uh, the owner has, um, graciously, um, agreed to help provide new, um, improvements as far as the infrastructure is concerned so that all, um, of the, uh, residents can take part in some of the, uh, development as well. So that's, that's all I have. Thank you so much.
All right, thank you. There are no speakers in opposition. With that, I will go ahead and close the public hearing and go to council questions and comments, beginning as is always our practice with the district representative, Dr. Riley.
Uh, thank you for that. Um, you answered one of my questions was about sewer extension in the area, because I know, uh, in the general area, uh, Fulton County will be doing it, but it doesn't come quite down to that, that location. So, um, is there a example of the elevations on this particular site? I saw the site plan, but I don't know what the house looked like.
Elevations?
Oh, um, yes, we, we- Um, yeah, I'm sorry, what was, can you repeat the question?
Do you have pictures of what it looks like?
Are there the elevations of the houses?
Um, yes. Is it, is it appropriate to share, uh, my mobile device? Uh, we did send renderings, um, and it was, looked at last time. Um, yeah, email, but let's see, one second, give me one second. Here you go. Uh, if, if it is appropriate by council.
Do you have an airdrop? Is that a, is that an iPhone?
No.
Oh, so you've already messed up.
Android, yes.
Jesse Valley.
Okay.
Jesse Valley.
Okay.
Okay, all right. All right, anything else, Dr. Riley?
That's it. I want to, that's it. I want to see the elevations, but, um, I don't have any additional questions.
And I, I'm sorry, I have a question, just point of information. I don't know who's already covered or not. The entrance and egress for these homes will be through-
Dove Drive is a separate standalone street off Campbellton. So the, the site plan, it looks like is just you driving off the street and you going into a driveway.
So they'll be going, they'll be going, they're not going through, uh, Montclair or-
No, no, no.
Promenade, they're gonna come right off Campbellton Road.
Uh-huh, off of Dove. They're gonna turn it, they're gonna turn off Campbellton on Dove and then at each of the respective houses to have individual driveways.
Got you. Awesome. All right, um, with that, uh, Mr. Clerk, please sound the next item.
Next item is executive session.
All right, the chair will entertain a motion to go into executive session.
I have a question, Chair.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Willis for her question.
It's six forty. You would need, are you gonna need, we're gonna need more time? Because this, I know several, the city attorney.
We can have more than one executive session. Uh, people say, people always say their things are gonna be real quick. I mean, we can do a, a fifteen-minute one now and do a, another one, um, afterwards. We just have to be judicious with our time.
Yeah, the, our mayor, the, the, um, city manager said hers is quick, but the city manager's isn't. I mean, I'm sorry, I said it backwards. The city manager says hers is quick. The city attorney said hers isn't.
Is it, is it about some, i- is it exigent to the, are either of your items exigent to the regular agenda meeting? Okay, and yours is not, Madam Attorney? Okay, and yours is quick. All right, so we can do a quick executive session now and a long executive session, prayerfully at eight o'clock. Um, so the chair will entertain a motion.
I move that we, uh, recess to executive session for personnel, litigation, real estate, and cybersecurity.
It's been properly moved and seconded. Any discussions, singing hearing now, let's take this vote by show of hands.
For the motion proven, unanimous, we are recessed at six forty.
All right, we'll see you in nineteen minutes and thirty seconds. All right, we'll see you in ninety minutes and thirty seconds.
I'm gonna go ahead and, uh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, let me say first, I'm gonna call.
Reconvene?
To, uh, order this seven o'clock meeting, first I need to, uh, take a motion to reconvene and close out the executive session. Ms., the chair will entertain a motion.
I'd like to make a motion to reconvene, that's it.
Alright, it's been probably moving second, let's take this vote by a show of hands, everyone, make sure that you change over while we're doing these hand votes.
Court, that motion approved five zero, we are reconvened at seven oh nine P M.
Alright, everyone, um, take this time while we're doing these hand votes to switch over to the seven P M agenda meeting in Civic Clerk. I will entertain, we have reconvened from executive session. Madam Attorney, is there any items which we discussed in executive session for which we need to take a public vote? Alright, thank you. Um, I will entertain a motion to adjourn the zoning and alcohol hearing.
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn the alcohol and drinking meeting.
Second.
Alright, so I'm probably moving to second, let's take this vote by a show of hands.
Court, that motion approved six zero, we are adjourned at seven oh nine P M, I got you.
Alright, I'm officially calling to order at seven ten, the meeting of this regular seven P M council meeting for the city of South Fulton. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
So roll call for the seven P M city council regular meeting. The Honorable Catherine Erfral, District one.
Present.
The Honorable Carmen Lita Gums, District two.
Here.
The Honorable Helen Z Willis, District three. The Honorable J C Sebastian, District four.
Present.
The Honorable Keisha B Bell, District five.
Present.
The Honorable Natasha Williams Brown, District six. And the Honorable Lynda B Pritchett, District seven.
Here.
And the Honorable Mayor Kelly. Press Mayor Evan Corn.
Alright, please sound the next item.
Next item is invocation, uh, by City Chaplain Ed Long Junior.
He also provided the flowers, you all have the flowers.
Good evening. Uh, the flowers again were provided on behalf of our city of South Fulton Chaplain Corps for all of our mothers, simply as a token, express happy belated Mother's Day. Thank you so much. To all the citizens, council, mayor, and all who are gathered in this room, our police chief as well, I ask that you all would join me for this invocation. Let us pray. Father God, we thank you for this time, this moment that we have to come together, further advancing the mission that you have placed in the hearts, minds, and spirits of the founders and now leadership of this awesome city. Though we know that this city has had its share of distractions, we thank you that tonight is yet another time that you have graced us with an opportunity to refocus, refocus on the needs of the stakeholders, the citizens, the constituents, and most importantly, your desire of us all. For your word you state, eyes have not seen and ears have not heard, nor has it entered into the heart of man, what you are up to in this city. And so we are excited for all of the things that are to take place. And I petition all who are gathered now, that as we present our concerns, we present it with respect, we present in love, we present with honor. For that is the spirit that blesses us all. We respect all faiths of those who are in attendance now. And so as I close this invocation in Jesus' name, you may do it according to your faith. Hallelujah. Thank you so much.
Hallelujah. Pledge allegiance.
United States of America, in the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
Alright, Mr. Clerk, please sound the next item.
Mister Mayor and members of council, we actually have a proclamation that needs to be added to the agenda. Um, and there were other additions to the agenda. In talking with the city attorney, um, this might be a proper time to approve the council agenda at this time to add the items for the agenda.
Alright, I will entertain a motion, uh, or, let's hear all of the additions first, please.
Okay, the additions that I have.
Is the family or representatives of the family of Velma Rainey here?
So we have a proclamation presentation that will be added to the agenda sponsored by the full mayor and council in honoring Ms. Velma Mae Turner Rainey. We also have the previous legislation, um, that was mentioned, a resolution establishing special alcohol permit for process for city council and/or mayoral events in parks. And then the last item is the zoning case that we heard, uh, at this, the five o'clock meeting, Z twenty-five, Daz-oh-oh-four. Um, we will need to add that for a first read today so that, uh, council could vote on it next, uh, at the next meeting. And that was the, the zoning agenda in Council District three. So that'd be a first read. Those were the ones I had, but I understand there's some others.
Okay, well, for those first, let's, let's make sure that, uh, the proclamation for Velma Rainey is in the actual proclamations, not the consent agenda item, and you can add the others wherever you recommend. I hear there are more. Uh, yes, the chair recognizes, Dr. Ral.
Thank you. I need to make a correction to item D one for a first read. It's a rezon, that orders to rezon six point four-nine acres located at zero and ten fifty-five Fairburn Road from the M-one light industrial to the C-one commercial district that falls under the cascade overlay. So I just want to make that correction, that it shouldn't be mixed, you should, it should be C-one.
Alright, uh, Councilwoman Gums.
I would like to, um, make, uh, removal of item E on the consent agenda and put that on the regular agenda, um, for voting, and then also to add a co-sponsor, which is Councilwoman, uh, Willis. This is item E off of the consent agenda.
Uh, what is that item? I'm sorry, just so I.
It's on the consent agenda. Nine E, I'm sorry, my apologies. It's a resolution.
Okay, the donation of a hundred thousand dollars to workers in blue.
No, sir. Resolution affirming support for voting rights and civil rights protections.
And we have a hundred thousand dollars on contention.
Yeah, I'm, um. Yeah, okay. My, my, my consent agenda looks different than, I'm looking at the one that's in the, in the portal, which apparently is different, that's fine. Anything else? Counselman Sebastian?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, on the administration, items six and seven surrounding vehicle policy, want to suggest that we table these items and direct, direct the city attorney to, um, combine those two items and bring them back as one comprehensive policy. And I believe that is something we may have to vote on. Right.
So that's not, that's not.
Right.
An agenda item to amend it this time, correct? Okay. Alright, I will entertain a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
I vote to approve the agenda as amended.
Second.
Yeah, okay. That motion was approved unanimously, seven zero, as amended.
Alright, Mr. Clerk, please sound the next item.
That brings us to proclamation presentations. Uh, the first proclamation presentation would be proclamation honoring Ms. Velma Mae Turner Rainey, uh, celebrating her one hundred and sixth, sixth birthday.
Did you come to her house last year?
Yeah.
Ms. Velma Rainey can't be, um, won't be here with us tonight. Uh, she, when you're a hundred and six, you go to them, they don't come to you. So, we'll be at her house on Sunday, but we did want to acknowledge her publicly here. Alright, so, um, I'm gonna just start it this way and we can just pass it down, everybody can read a paragraph.
Whereas the city of South Fulton, Georgia acknowledges Ms. Velma Mae Turner Rainey, an esteemed South Fulton constituent, who is celebrating her one hundred and sixth birthday, and?
Whereas Ms. Velma Mae Turner Rainey was born on May fifteenth, nineteen nineteen in Carroll County, Georgia, to her parents Luther Turner and Faris Smith Turner, growing up alongside brother Levi Wilson and sister Josephine Turner. Ms. Rainey began her housekeeping career around ages, around the age of seven, required to work in exchange for housing, food, clothing, and?
Whereas, as Ms. Rainey became older, she secured jobs as a uniform maid, kitchen assistant, sharecropper, farming assistant, telephone receptionist for her husband's landscaping business, and customer service representative for her husband's rental properties. This included handling complaints, collection of rent monies paid, organizing and handling billing accounts, assisting with supplies and materials ordered, and managing payroll, and?
Whereas Ms. Velma Turner Rainey, Mary Lovett Rainey Senior, on February twenty-second, nineteen forty, together they shared thirteen children. Lovett Rainey the second, James Rainey, George Rainey, Helen Ann Rainey, Liz Moore, uh, Sue Ellen Rainey Simpson, young Henry Rainey, Ernestine Rainey Huff, Josephine Rainey, Rosemary Rainey, Roberson, Gwendolyn Louise Rainey Gilleski, Ralph Rainey, Michael Anthony Rainey. Lacrimosa, Yvette Rainey Casey, and whereas?
Where, whereas Mrs. Velma Mae Turner Rainey contributed heavily to the Fulton County School P T A and City of College Park Brady Recreation Center, Mrs. Rainey conducted ballet and piano lessons for children and registered voters, and supported book mobile, mobiles, providing free literacy to areas that did not have access, and?
Whereas, Mrs. Velma Mae Turner Rainey, Rainey's favorite hobbies include completing and submitting the weekly crossword puzzle to neighbor newspaper, canning preserves, gardening flowers and vegetables, sewing and quilting with a specialty in children's clothing, and baking her famous pies, cakes, and cookies.
Now, therefore, be it but resolved that Thursday, May fifteenth, twenty-five, Velma Mae Turner Rainey Appreciation Day in the city of South Fulton, Georgia.
I'm gonna hand this to her descendants to say a few words.
Of course, I wasn't ready for this. Um, however, we just want to thank the city of South Fulton for all of your work. Everything that you've done to help us to get this proclamation is, is greatly appreciated. Um, my mom is grateful. She is, um, one who has always supported the things that have gone on in the city of South, uh, South Fulton, and we thank you today. We appreciate this proclamation.
Next proclamation will be a proclamation recognizing International Economic Development Week, May twelfth through to sixteenth, twenty twenty-five.
Whereas more than a hundred thousand economic development or related professionals worldwide are committed to creating, retaining, and expanding top-tier opportunities that facilitate long-term equitable community growth. And whereas the economic development profession cultivates thriving neighborhoods, champions sustainability and resiliency, boosts economic prosperity, enhances the quality of life, and builds robust tax bases. And whereas economic development professionals operate throughout diverse economic environments, including rural, suburban, and urban settings, local, state, and national organizations, public-private partnerships, chambers of commerce, institutions of higher education, among men, among many singular organizations and associations. And whereas economic development professionals serve as stewards, bridging connections between community stakeholders such as residents, business leaders, elected officials, industry executives, and educational administrators to collaborate in promoting job creation, community investment, infrastructure advancements, and an optimistic future. And whereas economic developers contribute to the betterment and progress of Southwood and Georgia within the state of Georgia and in the United States. And whereas since nineteen twenty-six, the International Economic Development Council has been a leader and driving force in advancing economic development initiatives with a steadfast commitment to fostering growth and prosperity in communities of all sizes worldwide through equity, inclusion, sustainability, resilience, and innovation. Now therefore, be it resolved that the mayor and city council of the city of Southwood recognize International Economic Development Week, May twelfth through to sixteenth, and reminds individuals of the importance of this community celebration. this community celebration, which supports expanding opportunities, bettering lives, and moving society forward. Congratulations. And I'm so excited to see some of our board members and our staff who work every day to promote our city, making sure we bring quality development and growth to our area. Thank you so much for what you do. Don't be shy.
We would like to thank the city manager, mayor, and council for supporting all the economic development initiatives. We have a robust week that is geared towards small business. That is the theme for this year International Economic Development Week. Tomorrow, we'll host a Small Business Resource Fair at the Economic Development Office, sixty-three eighty-five Old National Highway. It will begin at ten a.m. until four p.m. So please stop by. You'll get a chance to interface with local and state regional, and regional resources. Thank you.
Who's the next one for?
Got two more.
Two more?
The next one is a proclamation honoring Municipal Clerks Week.
Oh, this one's brief. I can do this one. Sorry. All right, this is a proclamation honoring Municipal Clerks Week. Whereas the office of the municipal clerk, also known as the city clerk, is a time-honored and vital part of local government that exists throughout the world. And whereas the office of the municipal clerk is the oldest among public servants, and whereas the office of municipal clerk provides the professional link between the citizens, the local governing bodies, and agencies of government at all levels, and whereas municipal clerks have pledged to be ever mindful of their neutrality and impartiality, rendering equal service to all. And whereas the municipal clerk serves as the information center on functions of local government and community. And whereas the municipal clerks continuously strive to improve the administration of the affairs of the office of the municipal clerk through participation in education programs, seminars, workshops, and annual meetings of their state, provincial, county, and international professional organizations. And whereas it is most appropriate that we recognize the accomplishments of the office of the municipal clerk during the fifty-sixth anniversary of Municipal Clerks Week. Now therefore be resolved that the mayor and council extend appreciation to our municipal clerk, Corey Adams Senior, and to all municipal clerks for the vital services they perform and their exemplary dedication to the communities that represent and do hereby proclaim the week of May fourth through May tenth, twenty twenty-five, as Municipal Clerks Week in the city of South Fulton. Congratulations. And I would like to also recognize Deputy Clerk Audra Caldwell.
I'll be, be real quick, Audra, I'll let you hold that, because truth be told, Audra is the, the brains behind this. She said, hey, we need to get recognized. And I think she had a conversation with some folks, and so here we are. But I want to thank the mayor and council for honoring us today and for their support and, and basically giving us the resources and support that we need to do our job. I want to thank the city manager and the Department of Public Affairs, who over this past week did an excellent job of sending out posts detailing what the city clerk's office does. Oftentimes, we get asked, what do you do? And I just simply say the city clerk's office is instrumental and touches every department in city government, and we take the work really serious. I want to thank my staff. Two of the, my staff members are sick today, so they weren't able to be here. But I just want to commit to everyone that we will continue to strive with professionalism, integrity, and confidence in everything that we do. Thank you. And the last proclamation involves all of these hard-working young men in here. The National, proclamation honoring National Public Works Week in the city of South Fulton.
As the? Is this one? All right, as, yeah, as they come. Yeah, Cory, come, come fill out the hole. Step it over, step it over. All right, we ready? Thank you. As, as you heard, if you saw the state of the city, if you didn't, go watch it, it's amazing. But we, as, we are the policymakers, you know, we dream the things for the city, we dreamt the city, but these are the gentlemen who built what we dreamed. So we want to just take this time to thank you for that. So whereas, public works professionals focus on infrastructure facilities and services that are of vital importance to sustainable and resilient communities, and to public health, high quality of life, and well-being of the people of the city of South Fulton, and whereas these infrastructure facilities and services could not be provided without the dedicated efforts of public works professionals, who are engineers, managers, and employees at all levels of government and the private sector, who are responsible for the rebuilding, improving, and protecting of our nation's transportation, solid waste systems, public buildings, and other structures and facilities essential for our citizens. And whereas it is in the public interest for the citizens, civic leaders, and the children in the city of South Fulton to gain knowledge and maintain an ongoing interest and understanding of the importance of public works and public works programs in their respective communities. And whereas, the year of twenty twenty-five marks the sixty-fifth annual National Public Works Week sponsored by the American Public Works Association. And whereas the twenty twenty-five theme, People, Purpose, Presence, highlights the three cornerstone ideals that motivate public works professionals to serve in their communities every day, meeting the needs of people and what gives public works its sense of purpose. Now therefore be it resolved that the mayor and the city council of the city of South Fulton extend appreciation to the dedicated public works professionals who come to work each day and make our communities and neighborhoods safe, dynamic, and aesthetically pleasing places to live, and do hereby proclaim the week of May eighteenth through May twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-five, as National Public Works Week in the city of South Fulton, Georgia. Ladies and gentlemen, Public Works Director Antonio Valenzuela.
Mr. Mayor, council, city manager, manager's office, we want to sincerely provide all our recognition and thank you for all the support that you provide to us. About seven years ago, there was only one employee. Today, we are forty-six. Thanks to you all. We are employees dedicated to work for the city, to make sure that we are twenty-four, seven, seven days. And without our man that you're seeing here, we cannot make this possible. All the roads are clean, the bridges and roads are safe, thanks to all of them.
Thank you.
All right, now we've come to my favorite part of the meeting where we get to hear from all of you. Mr. Clerk, please sound the rules for public comment.
Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor, we did receive, looks like, four speaker cards, but I will read the rules of public comment for the general public. Any city of South Fulton resident or business owner who wishes to address the mayor and city council and offer public comment on any item on the agenda may do so during the public comment period of the meeting. Any county, state, and federal elected official should be allowed to speak regardless of city of residence. Comments should be limited to two minutes per speaker. Bell will signal the end of each speaker's time. Public comments should be limited to only those items appearing on the current city council meeting agenda. Each speaker must complete and submit a request to speak form in its entirety prior to the beginning of the meeting. The person or city of South Fulton business owner desiring to speak should rise, address the city council, and when recognized, state their name, residential or business address, the agenda item they are addressing, and the city council district in which they reside. All remarks should be addressed to the council as a whole and not to any member. To ensure the opportunity for all those desiring to speak before city council, there is no union of time to another speaker. Speakers may not employ obscenities or threats of violence in their comments. Speakers should not be allowed to make remarks that have been legally recognized and not be protected speech, comments while addressing the city council. And speakers may not use public comments to campaign for political office, either for themselves or on behalf of other candidates for the purposes of limiting political influence on city employees and encouraging orderly and efficient meetings. With those rules read into the record, as I call your name, please approach the center podium and state your name, address, the item that you are addressing, and the council district in which you reside. The first speaker is Richard Snellings. I don't see him present. Charles Richards, Dana Norris, Nika Davis. Okay. Are any of those people present and wish to provide comment?
Would you call the, the names again so they can go ahead and just line up at the podium?
Charles Richards, Dana Norris, Nika Davis.
You don't have to line up if you don't want to stand, but just know that you're, you're up. Charles Norris?
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of the council. Thank you so much for allowing me to be here tonight and speak. My name is Charles Richards. My business address is ninety-six Ernest Biles Boulevard in Jackson, Georgia. I represent Ironstone Consulting and Design, who represents Say La Properties. The item I'm speaking on tonight is Z twenty-five zero zero five, Second Reed, which will be voted on later tonight, rezoning into a mixed-use development, which will include sixty-one townhomes and a mixed-use commercial slash office building on the property. Wanted to, wanted to briefly just bring the up-to-date. There were some concerns during the previous meeting regarding our site plan and the zoning buffer and the associated additional ten-foot setback. Our site plan was revised at the end of April and submitted to staff, includes those revisions, and we're very happy to comply with that request. Additionally, staff did send to us some questions. In, in response to the questions, our, our owner, and we have got together and discussed some voluntary conditions in hopes that someone this evening will make a motion and recommend it for approval. And if I have enough time, I'd like to quickly read into the record the proposed conditions, just so it's part of the record. Voluntary condition number one, all lots will be a minimum of two thousand square feet. Condition two, all units will be set back at least twenty feet from the back of sidewalk and be offset at least two feet from any adjacent unit. All units will have a minimum rear setback of thirty feet. End units will be twenty feet from each other, from an adjacent end unit. Interior lots will have a zero-foot side setback. Obviously, they're townhomes, they're next to each other. Condition three, all lots will have a minimum lot width of twenty feet. Condition four, all lots will have a minimum frontage of twenty feet. Condition five, the minimum heated floor area will be one thousand one hundred square feet. Condition six?
Mr. Richards, I just, that, that's your time. How many conditions do you have?
Twelve.
All right. If, if, if we have them in the appendix, we can read them.
Yes, sir. I just wanted to be part of the record. Thank you so much, Your Honor.
All right, go ahead.
Dana Norris, Nika Davis?
Yes. Good afternoon. My name is Nika Davis. I live on Obel Cook Road, and I've been a resident of South Fulton County for many, many years. I have a question regarding two items on the agenda. I'm not sure exactly what it involves. There's number six, where you're asking for approval for my, for a vehicle for the mayor, and request for minimizing the city's exposure to liability. I'd just like to get a better explanation of that, how those lines are being used. And that's my main concern right now. I do have some others, but I will address those at another time.
Ms. Davis?
Yes, Nika Davis.
All right, Ms. Davis, yes. We don't typically answer questions, but there'll be some. We'll, we'll take a point of privilege after we hear all of the comments. Is that, was that it for the public comments?
Yeah, I didn't see Dana Norris approach, so that completes the card submitted.
All right, we'll do council comments beginning with District Seven, Mayor Proten.
Okay. Well, I hope everyone had a happy Mother's Day. I did. And we appreciate all of the mothers in our city. Without you, we would not be here. And the mothers that have gone on to glory, your memories are not forgotten and are continued blessing to us. Last week, I was able to attend the Naleo Conference in L.A. It was a policy conference, and there was a lot of rich information shared about infrastructure projects and housing and development. So I hope to be able to use that in our district and educate our residents on the future of housing and development. Also, next week, we will have, there will be a public participation meeting to discuss a zoning project. This will be on May the nineteenth, and it will be at six thirty p.m., and it's discussing a zoning of a hundred eighty-eight acres located on Spence Road, and this will be at the Fairfield Inn at seven 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 five Ella Lane. I've put this on social media. So people, when you say that you want to be able to participate in these meetings, and you want to ask questions and understand in great detail what these projects are, this is an opportunity for you to do so. And that's all I have with that. I yield.
The chair recognizes District Six Councilwoman Williams Brown.
Thank you, Mayor. Oh, I've got a lot of stuff in front of me. Okay. So, for the Sensational Sixth District, the number of activities going on, beginning with our monthly food distribution, is going to be May seventeenth. beginning with our monthly food distribution, is going to be May 17th this month. The Fourth Saturday is the Memorial Day holiday, so we did move it up a week in Creel, in Creel Park. Beginning at 10:00 A.M. until the food runs out, we typically start running out about 12:30-ish. So please do get there, you know, do get there early, because if you wait to the end, there may not be anything left. We are now also promoting the Love T-Nolan. We'll begin its Field Day activities on tomorrow. Anyone that would like to join me in the morning with going to cheer on our babies, the K through three grades are up first, so if you would like to come and cheer the babies on, we will be at Creel, not at Creel, we'll be at Love T-Nolan at 10:00 A.M. On May 29th, from 11:00 to 1:00 at Burdette Park, there's going to be a Lunch and Learn with Forest Lawn Memorial, which will be a financial workshop. On June 3rd, from 9:00 A.M. to 11:00 A.M. At the IHOP on Old National and Flat Shores, right there in the Walmart Plaza, will be our Coffee with a Cop. And then on June 7th, for Father's Day weekend, we will have our annual Father's Day Bingo at Burdette Park. And of course, on June 28th, we're going to have a district town hall meeting that is going to focus on our public works and T-Spots and infrastructure projects that will include the city manager and her team, as well as public works. Please do not forget to join us on second Saturdays, now through October, from 12:00 to 4:00, for the Old National grows Farmers Market. I believe this has been, this is coming back to the L.A. Fitness Plaza where we started. So please do join us for that. And then, looking ahead to the future, things we have coming out. In the summertime, we do want to let you know that we are going to be starting back up our senior tech classes, for those of you who need assistance with your phones, your tablets, your laptops, any electronics, on what all the bells and whistles and buttons do. We will start that back up in the summer, and so please do be looking for information on that. They're going to be held at Gladys Deneard Library. We have outgrown the space at Creel Park, which is always a good problem to have, because that means that the community is active and engaged and involved. And this is the part where I look at the back and ask, did I get everything? I got the thumbs up. So yes, so these are your one church announcements for the week. Please govern yourselves what? Accordingly.
And our thank yous.
Oh, and our thank yous, yes. Let me not forget to thank all of the people who always and forever come out to help. We want to thank the students and the teachers at Seaborn Lee Elementary School, the 100 Black Men of Atlanta, the AKAs of the City of South Fulton, for coming out to see the encore presentation of The Lion King. And y'all, I just have to say, it was a trip down memory lane. I went to Seaborn Lee in the sixth grade, and had you told me in 1978 I'd one day walk back through the doors as a council member, I would have told you, you were lying. But it was, it was, it was very much a nostalgic moment for me. I want to thank Petco Foods for their donation to the Love T-Nolan Field Day. I owe y'all the form. I know, so, like, don't, don't pop my hand too hard. And then, we want to also remind people that my, if you will, if you are a resident, if you will see Merlin in the back of the room, he has the hard copies of my annual report that had previously been gone out via email, but the hard copies are now in. So if you are a resident and would like to have a copy of the annual report, Merlin, wave your hand. He's in the back of the room, and he has them for you. And so those are now the church announcements for the week. Please govern yourselves what? Accordingly.
Councilwoman Bell?
Good evening, everyone. Thank you all for coming out and tuning in online. We are gearing up for a very exciting weekend. This is the Second Annual Bell's Rhythms Revealed. So our event is scheduled for Saturday. It is a community-wide event for residents, exclusively for residents in the City of South Fulton. It will be housed at Burdette Park on Saturday, May the 17th, from 6:00 P.M. to 9:30. I do encourage, if you have not gotten your ticket, the tickets, I think we have maybe 25, 27 tickets left. So I do encourage you, if you are interested in coming on out on Saturday, please reserve your ticket on Eventbrite. We will have the delicious cuisines from Dots and Pearls. Many of you know her infectiously as Mama Monford. She's been in our community, Burdette Park community, since the early 80s. We also have Indigo Cat Soul Band, as well as songwriter, sometrus, and former background singer for Fantasia, Ms. Courtney Cupney. So please, please, I do encourage you to come out. This is an event for our grown and sexy, our adults, our seniors, but 21 and older, right here in the City of South Fulton. So please come on out and join us on Saturday at Burdette Park. You will truly be in for a treat. You will truly be amazed by what you see when you enter the room. So we look forward to seeing you there. And again, you can register online at Eventbrite.com. We are ready for graduation. We started our Workforce Academy, our dual award-winning Workforce Academy housed in District Five. So we are in the process of graduating our class of 30 electricians from our electrical 101 classes that will be on the 22nd. So we do encourage you all to come out, support our young adults and adults who have signed up for our free electrical program. This is not the end. They are moving on to the next portion, which is electrician or electrical training 102. So if you're interested, if you have anyone that is interested in finding out what are they doing in electrical program, I definitely encourage you to come out and celebrate our graduates with us on the 22nd, 6:00 P.M. Congratulations again to all of our 2025 graduates. I'm sure me and my colleagues have went through several high school, elementary, Bethune Elementary had their graduation today. So again, I just want to take this time to congratulate all of the parents, GGS, grandmothers, everyone that made it possible to make sure that we see these students cross the finish line and graduate from their respective schools. And again, if you are not receiving our monthly newsletter, our weekly correspondence, sometimes two and three times weekly, please be sure to send us your information. If you view in the back, Mr. Philip Wiley is my lovely constituent services representative. If you don't have my information, he can, he can get it for you. I shouldn't say lovely, but nevertheless, he can give you that information so that you can be included on our email blast and newsletters. If you have any requests for meetings or anything, please contact Philip Wiley as well. And then, just final, I want to thank Public Affairs, ACM Cooper, CM, and Attorney. We've been working on a lot of things in the past few weeks. And so I graciously, humbly appreciate all the hard work that you all are doing. Shaheen Solomon, Ms. Denise Wells, the entire Public Affairs team for making sure we stay on top of any press releases or any information that's needed. So again, thank you all, and have a wonderful night.
Ladies and gentlemen, if you have not, if you did not get to go to Bell's Rhymes in Life last year, let me assure you, you have never seen Burdette Gym look the way that it looks for this event. Councilwoman Sebastian?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, I just want to give kudos again to the staff, the entire staff, for putting on what was a fabulous state of the city. I mean, we went above and beyond. And I think the citizens who were there, who were engaged, and you could tell they had a good time from the party in the hallway afterwards. So again, staff, congratulations. Thank you all so much. We know a lot of work went into that. And if you haven't seen this, catch the video on YouTube. And you'll understand, we, we may play hard, but we work even harder, right? There are lots of things, good things going on in this city. To all our residents, I want to continue to ask you to stay engaged through our comprehensive plan process. There are two final meetings coming up. On the 20th, this one is going to be at Wolf Creek Library, starting at 5:30. And then, on the 22nd, it's going to be at the Fairfield Inn at 6:30 P.M. Also, we do have another development initiative happening, our urban, urban design initiative that's about Old National Red Hook and Cedar Grove. And we're going to have, I believe, the final meeting on the 15th. And that's going to be at Burdette Park, starting at 6:00 o'clock. I also want to mention that the District Four Farmers Market gets underway May 22nd, from 4:30 until 8:30. So it looks like I'll be doing double duty on that day. But please come out to, to that Farmers Market. You know, Farmers Market in District Four is kind of key, because we're trying to even boost the production of food and agriculture even more in that part of our, of our city. Finally, I want to thank the Pearls at Work Foundation, who partnered with me on the Senior Experience Safety Event, our second one. First one was held surrounding scamming, and this one was held surrounding physical safety and how seniors can protect themselves. And I want to thank Major Tamiko Bryant. She now is an Corporal Gavin for leading us in that effort from the Police Department. And I know some of the citizens or the seniors were fired up, because I think the smallest senior in the building asked if she could take me down after they saw the demonstration. So you may want to think twice before you come into District Four and I would mess with the seniors, because I think they are ready. So again, guys, thank you very much, and continue to stay engaged, and have a good rest of the evening. Thank you.
Thank you. District Three, Councilwoman Willis?
Thank you. Yes, congratulations to all of the 2025 high school and college graduates. We see a lot of college graduates happening and high school graduations happening. I have two this weekend and one, what, two last weekend. And I want to say, it's a huge accomplishment, and continue to matriculate. It pays off later. And congratulations especially to my husband, who graduated from college. And thank you, Councilwoman Gomes and Sebastian, for attending his reception. It was a long, it was a long battle, but he made it, cum laude at that. Thank you to all who volunteered at our senior brunch on last Thursday. We had over 315 seniors there, and they had a good time. Happy Older American Month. It was an honor to serve you and honor your legacy, and we thank you for all your contributions that you have made, not only to the city, but to this nation. We are all governing off of your backs and your contributions. And I'm thanking to Sigma Theta, the suburban chapter, for assisting us, all of our public safety cadets and, and staff, Parks and Rec. And thank you, Brandon, and also Kim. It was a lot, and, and I want to thank you all, because the seniors really loved it. You know, we honored everybody, but we forgot some very important people that we need to say thank you to and honor this weekend. Today is, this week is Law Enforcement Week. So we want to thank all of our police officers for everything that you do, especially in the City of South Fulton. I know that you all are still hurting. And you all are in our prayers. You're in my prayers every day. They don't want another proclamation. They just want to be appreciated. And if you see them, tell them thank you. Give them a gift card, you know, so they can have lunch. I said, a gift card. I'm not talking to, I'm talking to our residents. I'm talking to our residents. This is public comments. And no, we shouldn't use our P-cards to give them a gift card. For me, you know, they don't ask for much. They just ask to be respected. And they ask for good working conditions, and they ask for good, they ask for equipment. They ask for, to not be abused by people that govern them. And so, thank you for all that you do. When you walk out a door every day, you're facing Goliath. And you pray that you come back home to your family, and sometimes that just does not happen. And so, we thank you for putting your life on the line for us every day to keep the cities safe. And our crime has decreased, y'all, in the City of South Fulton consistently over the past three years. And that is not a huge, that is not a small feat. All right? I want to remind everyone that on May 17th, from 9:00 to 12:00 P.M., it will be recycling and day at Walkmore Park from 9:00 to 12:00. So redstructions of what can be brought and what cannot be brought, and govern yourselves accordingly. On May 15th, as... I was just waiting until... Can I reclaim my time? Thank you very much. May 15th, please make sure that you come to Burdette Park at 6:00 P.M. Yes, Cedar Grove and Old National. We'll get an update on our reimagining, our redevelopment. Some of it was highlighted in the state of the city. But there were charrettes done in all three areas. In Red Oak, there were charrettes done in Cedar Grove. There were also charrettes done on Old National. Now we have a full report that will be reported back to the community. And we have moved around the cities, so it does not matter that this meeting is at Burdette. All three areas will be covered. And we will be, we will have a final report on how we should move forward with redevelopment in those three areas. Thank you all for coming out and engaging. If you're not getting my newsletter, please send me an email at Helen.Willis@cityofsouthfulton.gov. And be safe. The summer is approaching. Our kids will be out. So small businesses, if you have jobs for our teams, please hire them. They are, they really want to work, and we had about 300 show up at our youth teen fair. I will put out all of the jobs, all of the employers who participated. Our kids want to work, and if we want, if we don't want their minds to be idle, please give them an opportunity. Please give them an opportunity and train them to make an honest living. You never know that they may end up owning a lot of the franchises that are in our, in our city and owning a lot of businesses. Remember, small businesses are the backbone of our economy across this nation. So let's try to give our kids a chance, to keep them out of the streets, to keep them out of trouble, and to keep them off of the corners from selling water. Thank you.
The Chair recognizes Councilwoman Gomes.
All right. May is Mental Health Awareness Month. I just want to make sure I remind individuals that this is a very important month to check in on family or friends and your loved ones as well. So I know that there has been a slight uptick in domestic and cases in the City of South Fulton regarding suicide deaths and things of that nature. So I do encourage you all to check on your loved ones. Also, too, it is Older Americans Month, as it was mentioned. We did have a great time at the senior all-white brunch. If you have not, that was literally insane, the amount of dancing. They started as soon as they walked in the door, so it was a great time, and popping the fan. So I hope that you all, if you missed it this year, you plan to attend next year. Also, as mentioned, the comprehensive development engagement meetings, we have two left, as Councilwoman Sebastian mentioned. Please, please, please try your best to attend those. The one on May 20th is at Wolf Creek Library, and May 22nd is at the Fairfield Inn off of Ella Lane. On May 17th, from 11:00 to 2:00, or I believe it's 11:00 to 3:00, we have the grand opening of the renovated Cliftondale Park. We have renovated tennis courts. Uh, we have renovated tennis courts, also the walking trail, and then the infamous dog park. Uh, we are calling it A Pote. And um there will be a lovely, lovely dog contest with a hundred dollars being the top prize. So bring all of your fur babies out. I ordered my um my baby's outfit off of Amazon. And I can only bring one because one is the only one that acts civil. Um, so we'll have food vendors, uh dog vendors. They'll be selling their um little doggy treats and things of that nature. We will also have a senior workout led by Deshaun Johnson um off the soft walking trails. So seniors come out, then you will get a free T-shirt as well. Um, I do want to thank um our Parks Director, uh Director Tanaa Turner and Deputy Director Tony as well. They have done a fabulous job with putting this together. We'll have a D J. So it'll be a great time to come out. Also too, uh, we had, excuse me, also on April the twenty ninth, we had a community engagement meeting in reference to Clifton Dell, um seeing the new proposed community center. We also have those renderings out at that event on the seventeenth. So if you didn't get a chance to weigh in, please come out on Saturday so you can uh weigh in in reference to what you would like to see your um community center look like at Clifton Dell. Also too, uh, excuse me, congratulations to all the graduates as well. And I want to do a special shout out to all of the uh ladies that came to celebrate Mother's Day with me, the A T O, all female riders uh who joined me at Wolf Creek Amphitheater. We had a Mother's Day celebration and we also learned some line dancing. Um, still that I have not learned to master as of yet. Even though it rained, we did boots on the ground and we had a really good time. So I do want to do a special shout out to them. And that is all the announcements that I have at this time. Thank you. Hope to see you on Saturday.
Dr. Rell.
Thank you again. Happy belated Mother's Day to all the mothers and all the twenty twenty five graduates. There is so much going on across the city. And I'm just gonna highlight a few of the things going on in District One, um either hosted by the city or or a partner organization. So the City of South Fulton Department of Cultural Affairs presents this graphics narrative group exhibition by Race to Recovery. Again, our focus on mental health. Um, it that exhibit will be at the Southwest Art Center to May thirty first. So stop by and check it out in the studio building. The Atlanta Black Chambers Presents Rise Up Initiative kickoff is on this Thursday from eleven to twelve thirty at the Evelyn G. Laurie Cascade Library. Um, so we want to encourage our small businesses to participate in any event. And um the spring recitals for our Seasons Artist Program. Um, the program, the recitals and exhibitions are this coming weekend, May sixteenth and seventeenth at eleven A M. and seven P M. respectively at the Southwest Art Center. Um, so stop by and check it out. These events are free and it's gonna be featuring dance, theater, music, and gallery exhibits at the Southwest Art Center. And um couple other announcements. Your Health America and Partners are hosting a five K and a one mile health walk and run on May twenty fourth at eight A M. at Trimmer Crow Park. Um, Dr. Barron has been doing this for several years and engaging our seniors around this e- um initiative to get them fit. So if your schedule permits, come out and participate. And last but not least, the Cascade Monthly Cleanup in collaboration with the Cascade Business Merchants Association will be um be changed to this month because of, again, the holiday weekend. Um, so it'll be this Saturday at ten A M. We meet at the Cascade Driving Range and we focus on making sure we keep our commercial quarter beautiful. So that concludes my announcements.
All right, Councilwoman Sebastian, I think you have an additional announcement.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, just wanted to remind folks that there's a special election for Public Service Commission that's happening actually June seventeenth. Early voting gets underway actually on um on May twenty seventh. And if you're wondering what the Public Service Commission is, if you don't know, basically your utilities, they're the ones that control the policy in Georgia surrounding this. So it is not, it is not something that we should, we should ignore. So I just want to let the public know to, you know, go to Fulton County's website, the election website, and look up the information. And there will be early voting as well, as I said, starting on May seventeen, um, May twenty seventh. And the election is June, is June seventeenth. Thank you.
All right, Ms. Dennis. Um, your question was why the, why the car? I just want to be clear that, that I answered your question. Yes? Okay, no, got you. Um, all right, you just responded that there there to because there are people here from the media as well. Uh, I think that we're gonna take that up at another time. But the mayor of South Fulton has always had a car. Um, I don't even think we voted on it when the first mayor got that he's, he had a car. Then they offered me the car. And uh I decided to take a different car because I wanted to promote um electric vehicles in the city of South Fulton. And the two and a half years that I waited to get that car actually put a hundred thousand miles on my own personal electric vehicle. Our city is a hundred square miles, so that's just a hundred trips um around the city, which is what I did. Uh, but but we're gonna be, we're gonna be discussing that, I think, at some other, at some other point. Uh, I do want to just echo everything that was already said. Um, Old Americans Month, Mother's Day, all the, all the things. Civic Clerks Month, Second Chance Awareness Month. Um, I'll come to you in a minute. Second Chance Awareness Month, we we could talk more offline. Um, Second Chance Awareness, all of these things. But it is graduation month. And in honor of our ancestors, I think it's important to acknowledge the passing of an incredible ancestor, um Dr. Kwanzaa Kanjufu. Many of you know his uh groundbreaking book, The Conspiracy to Destroy Black Boys, which is still alive and well. Uh, and just a lot of the incredible work that he did for um advocating for culturally appropriate education for our youth, the kind of thing that is under attack uh at this very moment. So I just want to take a moment. All right, thank you. Um, Dr. Kanjufu says you can't teach a child you don't love. You can't teach a child you don't respect. And you can't teach a child you don't understand. Um, so I thank all of the incredible teachers in the city of South Fulton who love, respect, and understand our children. Uh, next, I do want to, for those of you all who missed it, the four o'clock meeting, our Code Enforcement Board has won yet another award, the International uh Code uh Association Award for uh Code Enforcement Board of the Year. So we give a round of applause for our incredible Code Enforcement Board, who is is really a a model of the kind of restorative justice programs that uh we are pioneering here in the city of South Fulton. I think I'm going to close it there. You've got all these other announcements. As you've heard, please govern yourselves accordingly. Mr. Clerk, please sound the next item.
Next, next item is approval of city council meeting minutes. Regular meeting minutes from April twenty second, twenty twenty five. Work session minutes, April twenty second, twenty twenty five. And alcohol zoning public hearing minutes, April twenty second, twenty twenty five.
Meeting minutes is sounded.
Second. So uh properly moved with the second. Uh, is there any discussion? Being no discussion, uh, Mr. Clerk, if you would uh call for the vote.
Okay, the vote is open. Councilwoman Williams Brown, which one? Okay. Okay, that motion was approved unanimously, seven zero.
Okay, Mr. Clerk, if you would read the next item?
That brings us to Roman numeral nine, consent agenda items, items A through D.
Okay, um, I will entertain a motion. Properly moved with the second. Um, no discussion. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, uh, Mr. Clerk, if you can call for the vote.
Vote is open. That motion was approved unanimously, seven zero.
Next item, Mr. Clerk.
That brings us to alcohol license rezonings, variants, and modification cases for motion and vote. First item is request council approval of alcohol beverage license application by fifty-two forty-five G R Business LLC. Doing business as Quick Pick Food Mart. Has been submitted and is requesting approval for a change of ownership for the retail sale of beer and wine at fifty-two forty-five Walk Mall Road, South Fulton, Georgia, three oh three four nine. It's located in Council District Three. This was deferred at the April twenty second council meeting.
Good evening. Following my inspection with the business owner of Quick Pick Food Mart, fifty-two forty-five Walk Mall Road, South Fulton, Georgia, three zero three four nine, the following key points were confirmed. The business owner has officially enrolled in our City of South Fulton Police Department Fuses Program. The owner has hired licensed security personnel. Also, the owner clarified that his business does not operate twenty-four hours. Instead, closes at twelve A M. daily. I also wanted to mention that the owner has been very, very cooperative and very proactive with the City of South Fulton Police Department, implementing these key points, just ensuring that his business is safe.
Okay, at this time, I'll entertain a motion.
A motion to approve.
Properly moved with the second. Is there any discussion?
Yes.
Councilwoman Willis.
Thank you for complying with all of the recommendations um brought forth by our, our Police Department. I want to assure you that this is a partnership. You're not in this alone. We want our patrons to sh- um to continue to patronize you but also be safe. And um if you see any loitering or any um homeless encampments being set up across the street from you, could you please make sure our Police Department um are informed right away? Because the World Cup is coming and what we have seen is a lot of um homeless um encampments being pushed towards the city of South Fulton. And they're doing everything to stay um on top of it. Thank you very much for all your cooperation.
Thank you, ma'am.
Any further discuss- uh, do you yield? Okay, any further discussion? Being none, uh, Mr. Clerk, if you would call the vote.
Vote is open. Motion was approv- motion was approved, seven zero.
Next item, please.
Next item, letter B. Second read, request council approval of a zoning ordinance, K Z twenty-four dash zero two nine and C V twenty-four dash zero one one. Application by Chip T. Atlanta Buffington LLC, Carol Morris Manning and Martin L L P, requesting a rezoning from O N I to M one to develop eighty thousand square feet of light industrial space at thirty-six hundred Buffington Center Place. The applicant also requests a concurrent variance for section four oh five point zero one to reduce the buffer from one hundred feet to fifty feet. It's located in Council District Five. Staff recommendations approval, planning commission recommendations denial.
At this time, I will entertain a motion. A motion to approve. Being properly moved with the second, is there any discussion? No discussion. Mr. Clerk, can you call for the vote in the portal?
Vote is open. That motion was approved, seven zero.
Next item, please.
Brings us to letter C. Second read, request council approval of a zoning ordinance, K Z twenty-five dash zero zero five, an application by Sailor Prop Inc., requesting a rezoning from C one in O National Overlay District and R five A um to M I X at seventy-one eighty-five O National Highway to develop townhomes and a commercial building on eleven point six six acres. It's located in Council District Seven. Staff and the planning commission recommended denial.
At this time, I will entertain a motion. I move to approve zoning ordinance, K Z two-five dash zero zero five. Okay, with no second, I guess that doesn't, it does not, that fails for a lack of a second. Mr. Clerk, next item?
It brings us to Roman numeral eleven, agenda items. Letter A, procurement and contracts. Number one, the Finance Department requests council approval of a professional services agreement with NF B P A I four X. For operational and fiscal consulting services, the city will compensate NF B P A I four X at a rate of fifteen thousand five hundred per month for approximately one hundred hours of consulting services per month, not to exceed a total of one hundred eighty-six thousand six hundred dollars for the duration of the agreement.
At this time, I will entertain a motion.
I move to approve the NF B P A I four X um professional service agreement and the Police Department's approval to purchase a sale site simulator from tactical support equipment, not to exceed nine hundred and two thousand eight hundred and seventy dollars. Um, and the General Service Department's agreement with a clear spam for the purchase and installation of a clear spam metal building intended for warehouse storage at Fire Station Ten in amount not to exceed one million dollars. The contract became effective on January, um, I guess this is a piggyback contract, um, effective January eighth, twenty twenty-three, and will expire on January sixth, twenty twenty-seven.
Okay, and do we have a second? Uh, with a second, being properly moved, is there any discussion? Being no discussion, Mr. Clerk, can you place this in the portal for our vote?
That's approval of items one through three. Vote is open. That motion was approved unanimously, six zero.
Next item, please.
It brings us to item four. The General Service Department requests council approval of R F P twenty-five dash zero five, on call, on-call surveying. The required services include, but are not limited to, Alta and expanded Alta surveys, as-built surveys, topographical surveys, boundary surveys, site surveys, construction staking, and tree surveys. After careful evaluation, the city would like to award these contracts to Cowyer's Engineering and Design, Integrated Science and Engineering, Platinum Geomatics LLC, Rochester and Associates Incorporated, and B B G Incorporated. The contracts are not to exceed five hundred thousand dollars. The project funding will be derived from the city's approved operating and capital budgets.
I will entertain a motion.
I'd like to make a motion to approve R F P twenty-five dash oh five on-call surveying. The contracts are not to exceed five hundred thousand dollars. Also too, I'd like to make um a motion to council approval of R F Q twenty twenty-five dash zero zero one, installation of playground equipment. The amount should not exceed two hundred and eighty-eight thousand dollars and six, excuse me, eighty-eight thousand sixty-five dollars and sixty-four cents. Also too, I would like to um do council approval to piggyback the source well contract, R F P zero five zero two two elevators to vendor Schneider Elevator Corporation. The contract should not exceed one million dollars with an option to renew for two additional one-year terms. City of South Fulton also requests council's approval of R F P twenty-five dash zero seven licensed clinician to Grady Memorial Hospital Corporation. South Fulton Police Department is establishing a co-responder program in collaboration with a licensed mental health clinician just in time for Mental Health Awareness Month. And And that is it.
Is there a second?
Second.
Uh, being properly moved with the second, um, is there any discussion? Uh, Mr. Clerk, I do have a question. On item number five, it says R F Q U. Is that a typo or is that how it should have been sounded?
I would have to defer to the department.
Can you yield to?
Yeah, I would have to defer to the department, but I believe that's a typo maybe.
Okay, so it was properly, it was properly read, but as it's written, it's a typo, okay? Um, and with no discussion, um, Mr. Clerk, if you can put the vote in the queue.
Point of order.
And what is your point of order?
I'm not necessarily, I, wait, R F Q is an acronym for request for quote.
Understood.
So it may not be a typo.
The, if you look at number five, it says R F Q U twenty twenty-five.
Okay, I see, I got you, thank you, I apologize.
No problem, can you yield the mic? Okay, um, Mr. Clerk, if you can put the vote in the queue.
Vote is open. That motion was approved unanimously, seven zero.
Next item, please.
That brings us to B one under Public Works. First one, number one, Public Works Department is requesting entry into an I G A with the City of Atlanta Department of Watershed Management. For relocation of existing water facilities that conflict with the project that must be relocated or, and or adjusted to accommodate the T S plus one. O S I six seventeen Welcome Mall Road at J Lett Road Intersection Improvement.
There is more? It's more, Mr. Clerk.
Oh.
I think it is.
Oh, yeah, the D M V scope of work includes adjusting and abandoning two water valve boxes, installing and removing one fire hydrant and other apparatuses required. Pursuant to Resolution number twenty-five R three one one four and for which the city will invoice and be reimbursed. D W M is authorized to and shall contribute in amount not to exceed seventeen thousand eight hundred and forty-six dollars.
And I will entertain a motion.
Appertune.
It, properly moved with the second, is there any discussion? Being no discussion, Mr. Clerk, will you place this in the queue for our vote?
Vote is open. Approved unanimously, seven zero.
Next item, please.
Next item is number two, the Public Works Department is requesting council approval to amend the existing contract with E R S D L contractor. For the T S plus two road resurfacing. The amendment will include roads that were not completed in the twenty twenty-four T S plus two road resurfacing project. The amended contract amount is proposed to be three million, three hundred and fifty thou, thousand, two hundred and eleven dollars and three cents. With a ten percent contingency in the amount of three hundred thirty-five thousand, twenty-one dollars and ten cents. For a total amended amount of three million, six hundred eighty-five thousand, two hundred thirty-two dollars and thirteen cents. Bringing the total contract value not to exceed twenty-five million, four hundred eleven thousand, nine hundred seventy-one dollars and seventy-nine cents.
I will entertain a motion.
I move to approve as sounded in addition to the request by the Department of Public Works to receive fiscal, fiscal year twenty-five supplemental. Local Road Assistance Administration funds in amount of one million, seven hundred thirty-two thousand, eight dollars and fifty-two cents from G dot. And submit a forecast, a list of projects that are eligible to receive this L M A C funding. Um, the funding offset cost will be incurred by the City of South Fulton for T S plus two tier three resurfacing projects. Um, there is no match for this. In addition, the request, the approval to S plus one and two project funding adjustments and amendments to project timing. Uh, specifically, these adjustments will streamline the process for, uh, adjusting these changes in the future. That can be fully or substantially completed by March fourth, twenty twenty-seven. The adjustments will also create a cohort of projects forecast to begin construction in mid-twenty twenty-seven. The total of all these amendments, um, for T S plus one and two are nineteen million, two hundred and fifty-three thousand and eight dollars. In addition to request, in a, in addition to approving the standard operating procedures, um. Resolution and amending the city, uh, human resources policies and procedures manual for generative artificial intelligence.
Is there a second?
Second.
Properly moved with the second, is there any discussion? With no discussion, Mr. Clerk, please place it in the queue for our vote. Councilwoman Rowell, if you would release your microphone.
That motion was approved unanimously, seven zero.
Next item, please.
That brings us to item three, request council consideration and action to approve a resolution. To estimate the city's twenty twenty-five military rate in accordance with H B ninety-two and H B five eighty-one.
I'll entertain a motion. Mr. Clerk.
I'd like to make a motion to approve, uh, item number three, request council consideration and action to approve resolution to the estimate. To estimate the city's twenty twenty-five military rate in accordance with House Bill ninety-two and House Bill five eighty-one. I would also like to request council approval of resolution to support the growth, freedom revitalization and long-term success of the Old National District. And for other lawful purposes. And also, you want to, let me stop there, J C. Okay, uh, request council approval of resolution establishing a ninety-day moratorium on the issue of burn permits in. The three-mile radius of the area previously known as Bishop Road landfill and other lawful purposes. And then also too, I would like to skip to number eight and then request council approval of a resolution establishing mandatory training. For planning and zoning commissions and for other lawful purposes.
Second.
Properly moved with the second and discussion, Councilwoman Willis.
Please, I have one question. If, um, did, and I'm sorry, I, maybe I missed it. In the resolution where request for approval of resolution establishing mandatory training for planning and commission zoning members. Did we give them a, a period of time for them to complete the training? And if they don't complete the training, then, uh, they can be reappointed. A city attorney.
Um, just a point of clarification, did you mean replaced or reappointed? So there is a provision for them to be replaced if they don't commit, if they don't complete the training. I believe it's within sixty days, if I'm not mistaken, um, that if they don't complete the Carl Vinson training within the sixty days, then, um, they're replaced.
Any other discussion? Being none, Mr. Clerk, if you would place the vote in the queue.
Vote is open. Items three through five and number eight. That motion was approved unanimously, seven zero.
Next item, please.
That brings us back to item six, request council approval of a resolution to amend Resolution twenty twenty dash zero one one. To include and adopt the Merrell Vehicle Usage Policy and for the lawful purposes. And I think we're hearing them together, number seven, request council approval of a resolution to amend Resolution twenty twenty dash zero one one. A resolution minimizing the city's exposure to liability, creating a city vehicle usage policy for elected officials. And for other lawful purposes, this was sponsored by council members Willis, Gums and Sebastian.
I will entertain a motion.
I may pretend I want a motion that we table item six and seven. And direct, um, our city attorney to combine these two items into one comprehensive policy that we can bring back before this body.
Properly moved with the second, is there any discussion?
Yes.
Councilwoman Willis.
Thank you. Um, I just want to give some context around these policies. Uh, these policies, the, the, the policy that was put in the queue, uh, led by Willis, Sebastian. And Gums was put in a legislative queue per our policy, January nineteenth. And this policy is a comprehensive policy that we were working on to address all elected officials. This is not just about the mayor, um, and so we should not be having a policy for Matt Oriol use. I've also sent a email over from our former CFO where she clearly explained that when we are driving, when we are, um. Local, that we should not be driving, uh, city vehicles as elected officials because all of us get a four hundred dollar car allowance. Uh, to allow for gas and mileage. Now, we did historically allow the mayor role to have twenty-four access to a pool car. Uh, but it's still only supposed to be for city use, for city business, not for personal use. And so, um, and we are not supposed to, uh, use these cars. Um, unless we're going fifty miles outside of the jurisdiction, um, unless we get approval from the city manager. And so, um, I would like to make sure in these policies that we have something to say that the city manager can give discretion. Because there are circumstances where we will have to use, um, the cars, I just don't want us to be restricted. Um, and we get in a circumstance where we have to use it, um, but theoretically, we're not supposed to be using city vehicle. Um, on a daily basis, because we're receiving allowance. And, and the email said that for the former CFO, that is called double dipping. And we're certainly not supposed to be taking these cars and taking them out of town for personal usage. And so, um, if we are going to be fair, um, you know, the mayor stated that, um, his car was taken away because there was some questionable violations. But he wasn't the only one that had questionable violations. And I will not call names, but he was not the only one that had questionable violations. And so, um, I would like for a comprehensive policy to come back. So that we can have clear guidelines on when we should use, um, these city vehicles. And, um, just make sure there's transparency around it and make sure that there's clear guidelines around it. And, um, and it should not be rushed because, uh, certain people don't have, um, cars. These cars are not for our personal use. When I didn't had a, when I didn't have a car, I had to rent a car. And I had to pay for it with my personal funds. And, um, the city attorney did advise that, uh, our per diem can be used to Uber. If we ever get in a position where we don't have cars, we can Uber. We can Uber here to City Hall and all of us have staff personnel. They have, uh, proper protocol they have to go through if they ever have to use a city car for city purpose. And they can take us wherever we need to go. And so she did advise that. Thank you, I you, and I look forward to the comprehensive policy that will, um, be, give guidelines for mayor and city council. Thank you.
Councilwoman Rowell.
Thank you, um, that was a lot, but I, I will say, um, I am looking forward to this discussion because I do think it is unique in that. No other elected official had a designated car. And so I don't know where we'll ultimately land, I'm looking forward to looking at how we potentially merge these, um, and what that rendition looks like. Um, and, and I also want to make sure that we don't craft it so narrowly, you're in a box. Perfect example, code enforcement riots. I've been on that, you could be riding around with your, you know, for half a day, looking at issues. Again, of course, we know that we're not trying to make sure that anybody abuses the policy, but you also have to be practical for what we are doing. And so, um, I'm looking forward to city attorney to see how we can marry these two, thank you.
Any further discussion? Okay, Councilwoman Willis.
Thank you for recognizing me. Um, I think in my statement and a lot was said is that we should always give discretion to the person who's responsible for the daily operations of the city. And we should always give deference to her, for her to make, um, approval. If we are outside of the guidelines that are established, which is fifty miles over the, um. The, the mileage or if we have extenuating circumstances, because we will. And, um, so I think we should, if we are falling outside of those guidelines, if we always defer to the city manager and let her give her discretion. Then, or whoever's in that role, let them give discretion, then we should be fine. But we should make sure that's a part of protocol, thank you.
Any further discussion? And being none, Mr. Clerk, will you place this in the queue for a vote?
Vote is open. The motion was approved unanimously, seven zero.
Next item, please.
It brings us to the first item that was, uh, pulled off of the consent agenda. Uh, item E, request council approval of a resolution affirming support for the voting rights and civil rights protections. And expressing strong opposition to recent changes at the United States Department of Justice Civil Rights Division. This is sponsored by council member Gums.
I will entertain a motion.
I'd like to make a motion to, uh, approve this resolution as sounded.
Properly moved with the second, is there any discussion?
Yes. Um, one, I do want to, um, offer the reason why I am doing this and I hope that other cities will, uh, join in this. As many of us have seen the recent actions that have taken place in the, our justice department. Um, they have truly weakened the enforcement of our voting right laws, uh, throughout our city, state and throughout our country. So, um, the resolution is definitely called, is a call to action and asking residents to reach out to their state and federal representatives. To demand accountability and to ask for them to reverse this action immediately. Just taking a, a bold stance on making sure that our voter rights and civil rights are protected. And also too, Councilwoman Willis has asked to be a co-sponsor on this legislation.
Is there any other discussion, Councilwoman Willis?
I want to thank, thank you, I want to thank Councilmember Gums for bringing this and leading this and allowing me to co-sponsor. Um, there has been a major push to disenfranchise voters throughout this nation. And, um, it impacts our voter turnout. And we have an election this year and we don't need to make voting complicated. Um, and we don't need to disenfranchise our voters. Everybody needs to know when we have an election, who's, um, on the ballot to be, be elected. And, um, we need to do everything in South Fulton to increase turnout. We have, voting has consequences and as a result, Mrs., um, uh, Attorney Kelly. I will be putting forth legislation for us to look at the way that we place signs out. Because I've heard several complaints from residents complaining about they don't know when we have elections in the city. Because, uh, we can't display signs, we have unintended consequences where candidates are getting fined, um. For placing signs because we're just simply trying to educate our voters that we have, um, you know, in election, uh, on election day. You know, we've had instances where several of our candidates have had their signs snatched up from the voting precincts. And people don't know that we have certain voting precincts, um, in the city. And several of us have had those discussions, um, and it's time to revisit this policy. We do not need to disenfranchise our vote. We do not need to disenfranchise our voters, and our voters need to know that when we have elections. So I am sending you an email as we speak to bring that policy back by the next council meeting so we can revisit and revise it. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Councilwoman Monroe.
Well, while we're talking about, thank you for addressing it at a national level. I just want to make sure that whatever we bring back is, is consistent with state law, which is very clear that there are supposed to be no signs in the right of way. And for those who ran last time, we had to adhere to the laws. And so we want to make sure we have a level playing field with that. So I just want to make sure, you know, just as we wanted to make sure that laws that were put in place to produce, to protect voters' rights at the national level, we want to make sure that we follow state law.
Thank you. And I will acknowledge myself. Our last election, there were several instances where even our law enforcement kind of had to play security because there, there have been continual threats of violence towards candidates. It happened towards me. Also, I have heard that officers have received training from the state of Georgia on election law and election procedures, which is really important because there's been confusion through the years. And I, I think now we're getting to a point where we're improving on how all this works. But the state also does do training with their ethics commission, so that's something to also look into. And with that, any other discussion? With no other discussion, Mr. Clerk, we will place this in the queue for our vote.
The vote is open. That motion was approved six to one.
Next item, please.
That brings us to our add-on item, a resolution establishing a special alcohol permit process for city council and/or mayoral events in parks and for other lawful purposes.
I will entertain a motion.
That, I move that we bring the policy back for the next council meeting because we had a lot of discussion in the work session, and you recommended, yeah, you recommended, we, we need, you recommended the walk-on, and you made a lot of recommendations. We also came back with recommendations like, right, so we don't want to approve this policy in its current state. We want to make sure that you incorporate all of the suggestions that council recommended. And you might have to go back to the tape and listen to some of the things that were said. So I ask that we hold this policy and bring your walk-on policy to include the, the suggestions from the rest of the city council for the next, for the, for the next agenda.
Is there a second? No, I know, but, but the thing is, I, I was trying to hear a motion, and I heard a conversation. So we have a motion.
My motion was the conversation.
I understand. And do we have a second?
She just.
Okay. And then, okay, and then now, do we have discussion?
Yes.
Okay. And so Attorney Kelly wanted to speak in discussion? And, okay, Attorney Kelly.
What the council can do is approve the comments to be included into the resolution. It doesn't have to be brought back. As you mentioned, I don't mind going back and including the comments into the resolution. But if it's the council's pleasure to bring it back on the twenty-seventh, that's fine.
Okay, so Attorney Kelly has the floor. Have you yielded?
I have.
Okay. And Councilwoman Bell, Council, Councilwoman Bell, activate your microphone.
So I do have discussion in regards to my upcoming event on Saturday. I know it's by case by case, so I need to have some clarity on that.
Well, because there's not a current resolution allowing it, the council would have to take a spontaneous vote on it, on whether or not they will allow you and what the parameters would be, as there's not a standing resolution that they're going to vote on today.
How do you wish to proceed then with that? Because it's already approved. The event is already approved.
The event itself was approved, but having alcohol at the event is a separate action that the council would have to take and approve.
So do we need a motion for that?
Well, we have to dispose, we have to dispose of this motion here first. Okay. Councilwoman Willis.
I just wanted to direct a question to you or the city attorney. Can we go ahead and carry this motion out and make a separate motion for her? Because I do want to make sure that we are including all of the comments. We have a clean policy, and we make sure, because this is alcohol in parks, we need to make sure this is right. And we don't have any unintended consequences. We don't have any liability on this. All of that was talked about. So can we carry this motion out to bring the policy back at the next council meeting? And then whatever, whatever Councilmember Bell, I apologize, whatever Councilmember Bell is trying to do, she make a separate motion?
Okay, any further discussion? And, Mr. Clerk, would you reread the item just for clarity's sake?
Yes, I have a motion by Councilmember Willis, seconded by Councilmember Sebastian, to table the add-on item establishing a special alcohol permit process for city council and mayoral events in parks and bring back a, a comprehensive document that encompasses the comments from mayor and council previously.
If you can place that in the queue for a vote.
Vote is open. Councilwoman Willis Brown, did you want to vote? Yes. Okay. No. So yes, okay. Yes. That motion was approved five to two.
Okay, so at this time, I'll entertain a motion. Mr. Clerk.
I motion for approval for my upcoming event on Saturday, May the seventeenth, as initially approved in January the fourteenth, to provide wine only, one complimentary glass of wine per resident upon proper ID verification and check. And the vendor is already a city of South Fulton vendor who is approved with insurance that is compliant, that is compliant with the proposed resolution.
May I make a substitute motion, please?
Okay, properly moved in second, and Councilwoman Willis.
Can, is the, is it, well, let me ask this before I make a substitute motion. Is that possible? Can I ask a question?
Discussion.
Yes, okay. Is it possible for a ticket to be given? Okay, that's what I was, that's. And I understand that person is a vendor, but the, how, but the insurance, because they're a vendor, that don't mean that they have insurance. So a certificate of, a COI, certificate of insurance, I mean, this Saturday, they, are they going to be able to, they are, are they going to be able to approve that they have proper credentials when it comes to alcohol? Because I know. But if you don't mind, I'm, I'm city attorney, because she's the one that has to be okay with this.
So I do want to state for the record, I still have, I still have heartburn about alcohol in ports, so, in parks. So when you said be okay with this, I don't know if there's going to be a scenario where I'm going to feel okay with it. So do you want to state that for the record? I have talked at length with Councilwoman Bell. She's been extremely communicative and patient. They will have to give us a COI. I agree with you, just because they're a vendor does not mean that they have the requisite amount of coverage. They're going to have to show us a COI with the requisite amount of coverage. They're going to have to show that they're certified with the, I think it's called the Serve Plus or something along those lines, Safe Serve. The other thing is, it has to be abundantly clear that no city funds in any way, shape, or form can be used to purchase alcohol or to pay for the pours or vendor or any of their services related to alcoholic beverages. I also understand from speaking with Councilwoman Bell that they're going to give a ticket. They're going to card everybody that there will be no children anywhere on the facility while alcohol is being served.
And if I may add, as previously discussed in regards to this specific event and matter, all of the registration information indicates city of South Fulton, age verification will be checked upon entry as well as twenty-one or older, must be twenty-one and older, that's already on all of the advertisement, marketing, and promotion. So anyone who is registered for the event has received that. In addition, as last year, all wine pours bartender is paid specifically out of Councilwoman Bell's personal finances. And so no fines, no P card, no city resources will be used for that, as previously mentioned to both CM and attorney.
Discussion.
Okay, discussion for Councilwoman Sebastian.
I'm trying to wrap my brain around what, I'm trying to wrap my brain around what this item is. Because we already have the laws on the books. We voted to table possibly amending those laws to allow alcohol to be served in the parks. But we are asking now to, we are asking to approve an event where we're going to serve alcohol in the parks. So I, I'm, because I'm not even sure if we can even approve this. And, and I, I, I kind of feel the pain for Councilmember Bell. But I just want us to, I just want to make sure we are not, we're not doing something that is against our own rules. So I'm, I'm not even too sure what is happening right now. So that's my, that's my point, so, all right.
Ms. Subirai.
Thank you. If you approve it, what we would have is the police department would, would prepare a special alcohol events permit. So there is a mechanism to do this, should you vote? Yes, there is a mechanism to do it.
Councilwoman Willis.
But I do want to clear it up, because it was put on the record. And I saw the city attorney's face. As duly elected officials, we can't personally do it either, can we? Like, can't you get somebody to sponsor it? We can't personally, we are duly elected, we can't personally break rules. Because you said you were going to personally do it with your own personal finances, and that was stated. I, I, I mean, just give your legal opinion.
You got to release it. I have heartburn about all of it, if I haven't made that abundantly clear. But is it against the rules for her to personally buy it from her personal finances, as long as that is not in any way connected to city funds? She's allowed to? Would I suggest it? No, because sometimes it's very, that's a bit of a blur in other lines. But is there a prohibition on doing it? No. But again, all of this gives me heartburn, wouldn't recommend, against my legal advice, but there's not technically a rule saying she can't do it.
Councilmember Bell, can you get somebody else to do it? Okay.
Councilwoman Willis, do you yield, or do you have any, okay? Any further discussion? Anybody? Okay, so, Mr. Clerk, if you can place this in the queue for our vote.
Vote is open. That item fails to receive four affirmative votes.
I would like, if you mind, can I make another motion?
Yes, ma'am.
I would, I would like to make a motion for a special use permit through the police department if, to approve if Councilmember Bell can find a sponsor. Would that be better, or should I just leave it alone? Do you still have heartburn? Okay, what I'm.
So if there's a sponsor, then that would have to go through the donation process, and then that would also have to be approved by council, and we'd have to make sure there's not a nexus to ethical violation. And so all of it's icky.
Mr., Mr. Clerk, next item, please.
That completes all of the action items. We do have a number of first read items that, with your permission, I can go and read them into the record. Number one is first read, rezoning ordinance to rezone six point four nine acres of land located at zero and ten fifty-five Fairbend Road from the M one zoning district to the C one zoning district. Number two, first read, rezoning ordinance to amend the city of South Fulton zoning ordinance for the purpose of amending the regulations related to fastening bills, advertisements, notice to poles and trees, and signs in the right of way and for other lawful purposes, sponsored by Councilmember Gums. Number three, first read, rezoning ordinance, KZ twenty-five dash zero one two, applicant is requesting rezoning from MIX to C one to construct a bank on one point zero one acres at fifty-two ninety Hamilton Fairbend Road. Number four, first read, rezoning ordinance, KZ twenty-four dash zero three three, applicant is requesting rezoning from AG one to develop a subdivision with two hundred and thirteen single-family detached homes and one existing family dwelling on one hundred and nineteen acres, point three six, at zero seventy-three sixty-one, seventy-three fifty-seven, and seventy-three sixty-five Ono Road. I think that was withdrawn, correct? Okay. So number four was withdrawn, so we won't need that one. Number five, first read, rezoning ordinance, KZ twenty-five dash zero zero six, applicant is requesting to rezone from the A district to TR for the purpose of constructing fifty townhomes on eight point five three acres of land. And then six, rezoning ordinance, KZ twenty-five dash zero zero three, applicant Whitney Blanco requesting a rezoning from R three to R four A at eighteen seventy-five Dove Drive on one point zero nine acres to accommodate the construction of four single-family homes. And then the last one is from the five o'clock meeting, which is Z twenty-five dash zero zero four, resurgence consulting LLC requesting rezoning from CUP to TR in the Cliftondale overlay district to develop, develop forty-four townhomes. The applicant is also seeking to change the future land use from suburban neighborhood to suburban neighborhood two. And those are all for first read.
I will entertain a motion.
First read. Uh, first read.
No, I know, but, uh, that's the end of the.
I'm adjourned.
Uh, can we take this vote by a show of hands?
Um, we can adjourn because she said she had something that, um, she has a legal matter for.
Well, we're just, we've just adjourned. We've just adjourned. You had a legal matter? Could she, he would take a motion to reconsider or, or? Okay, so Councilman Sebastian has made a motion to reconsider.
Second.
Properly moved with the second. Is there any discussion? And being none, uh, we'll take this vote with a show of hands. Okay, so that fails. Okay. Good evening, everyone.